Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. And welcome to the June 15th, which will be in the June 15th meeting of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education. Ms. Barrios, can you please begin with your spoon?
Yes, I can. Good evening and welcome. El siguiente mensaje será repetido en español. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear 30 minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there'll be another and final opportunity for additional public comments. So if you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, you can stay and speak at the end. To participate in public comment, please raise your hand now by clicking on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and selecting the raise your hand button. To comment by phone, you'll be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. If you wait to speak and you'll have to wait until next public comment period. When called upon, you will be promoted to panelists. This means that you'll appear on screen. If you do not wish to appear on camera, please be sure to disable your camera on your end. The board president will usually call in our students first. If you are a student who wishes to speak, please write student or S. At the end of your name or at the beginning of your name. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker. On an individual basis, she also has a discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. A countdown will display on the screen alerting you when your time is up. If you are still speaking, you are allowed to finish your sentence, but please try not to speak beyond your time. Thank you.
Voy a proporcionarles un resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión. Después de los procedimientos preliminares, un periodo de 30 minutos será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Al final de la junta, que usualmente puede ser cerca de las 10, habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes desean participar en comentario público y parte de miembros de la audiencia que no tuvieron la oportunidad de proporcionar comentarios durante el primer periodo de comentario público. Para comentar por videoconferencia, a favor de levantar la mano ya haciendo clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo de la pantalla y selección el botón levantar la mano o raise your hand. Para comentar por teléfono, levanta la mano presionando estrella nueve. Favor de celo ya, ya que si se espera hasta el inicio del periodo de comentarios públicos, tendrá que esperar hasta el final de la reunión para participar. Usualmente, la presidente llamará a los estudiantes primero. Por favor, escribe estudiante o S detrás o enfrente de su nombre. La presidente de la mesa directiva outrará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador y tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o otra cualquier adacción especial. Al ser llamado, será premestreado al panelista y aparecerá en pantalla. Si no desea de aparecer en pantalla, por favor de apagar su cámara. Aparecerá en una cuenta regresiva en la pantalla que le avisará cuándo ha transcurrido el tiempo. Si continúa hablando cuando se acaba el tiempo, puede terminar su oración, pero por favor, trate de no sobrepasar su tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much, Ms. Barrios. Can you please call the role for the Board of Education?
Yes, I can. Director Julie Sinai.
Here.
Director Anna Vasudev.
Presenting.
Director Ty Alper.
Here.
Vice President Dora Babbitt.
Here.
President Kedija Brown.
Present. Thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Director Sinai. Is there a second?
A second.
Then seconded by Director Babbitt. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the role?
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you. At this time, Vice President Babbitt will receive the report out from closed session. For the record, everyone, closed session began at six. Public comment for closed session began at 6:00 PM and closed session convened at 6:50 PM. Vice President Babbitt, whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much. All members were present at the 6:50 time. And for item 3.1, it was not discussed. And for item 3.2, it was moved by Director Alper, seconded by Director Vasudev, and voted unanimously in favor. And that concludes the closed session report.
Thank you so much, Vice President Babbitt. We have now reached the time for a first opportunity for public comment. As Ms. Barrios said in her opening remarks, if you are interested in speaking to the Board of Education, this is the perfect time to raise your hand for public comment. If you are a student, please put S or student at the beginning or at the end of your name. That way you will be recognized and given priority to speak first. There will be a second opportunity for public comment in today's meeting. So if you do not get the opportunity to speak during this first public comment session, please know that you have the second opportunity. And as always, you can email us at Board of Ed at all of our emails or all of our emails individually to ensure that we receive the comments that you want to offer us this evening. There are about 15 hands for public comment. So we will give each speaker one minute on the clock. And we will begin our public comment period with, I believe I saw one student, Aleisha Thompson will be our first speaker for this session, followed by Lily Bonner. Ms. Barrios, or I'm sorry, Associate Superintendent, can you please promote Aleisha Thompson? Hi, Aleisha, welcome.
Hello.
Hello. In just a few seconds, Aleisha, the timer will come on and then you'll have the opportunity to speak, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Give me one.
Oh, that's okay. Take your time, Ms. Barrios.
And President Brown, I think I'm going to promote after Aleisha, there's another student. S, Ziva Salinas.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Ruben. Ms. Well, Ruben, since she'll be the one promoting, just after Aleisha, remember to promote Ziva. Thank you. Aleisha, just hold on tight. One more second. We're waiting to get the timer up and as soon as it's up, then it'll be your turn to shine, okay?
All right.
All right.
I could do my virtual background timer, if that's okay.
That would be really helpful. So Aleisha, as you talk, Vice President Babbitt will have a virtual background behind her with the time. Do you see the time loading in the right-hand corner? You'll look at that and she'll also let you know when you have 30 seconds left to speak, but you'll be allowed one minute to speak this evening, okay?
All right.
Okay, so she'll restart the timer and then as soon as you begin talking, so go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Preserving the virtual education program is something I highly recommend. With COVID back on the rise and vaccine mandates most likely being lifted for students and staff, it could increase the chance of our students getting ill and pass that to their families. Some who already have an illness which could be harming their family members. COVID has nothing to toy around with, and this virtual program does help with protecting families from being exposed to COVID. At my old middle school, there had been about 33 COVID cases just before the year was up. So I am very grateful that this program let me have classes virtually, so I wouldn't be stuck in a classroom wondering if the people I'm with tested positive for COVID or not. Education-wise, this program is satisfactory. It lets me work at my own level instead of what the class wants me to work on. I grew more enjoyment in what I had learned as well. All in all, this program had really helped me enjoy learning and our family and our family protecting ourselves during the pandemic. So please keep the virtual education program in our school. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Ziva Salinas, followed by Lily Bonner. All right. Hi, Ziva. Welcome. You can begin whenever you're ready.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you perfectly.
Thanks. Today I want to speak of that we should keep Virtual Academy open. Because, because I have been learning a lot in, in all, in all these months, years. It's just been amazing. I, I don't know what to say. It's just the best program I've ever been in. And Virtual Academy means a lot to me, not just for learning, but even for keeping my family safe, including my little brother. And I have, well, I have grown in knowledge and I am thriving. So I, I would please recommend to take this in consideration that you would keep Virtual Academy open. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ziva. Next, we will have Lily Bonner, followed by Edgar Salinas.
Ms. Bonner, you're muted. You can unmute first.
Sorry. Um, I recommend keeping the Virtual Academy open. It's a great program. My son has learned a lot. We have health issues and with COVID on the rise, schools may not have the mask mandate. I would hate for anyone to get COVID and set everything back. We're already going ahead. Let's keep it open. The students need it. So does the families. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Edgar Salinas, followed by Roxanne Tobar.
Okay, here we go. Hi, how you doing? Good evening. Thank you so much for having us and taking the time to speak to us. First of all, I want to thank President Brown for, you know, her support of keeping the Virtual Academy open as well as Director Sinai. We do appreciate your vote. I will also ask other board members to please jump on board and help us save the Virtual Academy as well as the other programs and their teachers as this really helps us remain safe. I have a immunocompromised child, this is small, as well as our grandparents with our conditions that if they were to become sick, we'd be really problematic. In, in, I mean, sure, the program has been, you know, working for Ziva really, really good. She's the thrive, she's, you know, I mean, you know, she's, in math, she's great. I don't know, the program just really helps us a lot. So I will please ask you to reconsider your position in keeping the Virtual Academy going, not just for the next year, but on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Roxanne Tobar, followed by Ms. Kamika.
Hi, Roxanne.
Hello.
Yeah, so we can hear you just fine.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Hello, my name is Roxanne Tobar. My son just completed kindergarten in Virtual Academy. I just want to remind the school board that when it was first proposed to close Virtual Academy, initially it was assumed that COVID virus would receive because of vaccinations and booster shots. However, despite those vaccinations, COVID has continued to spread and proceed, produce, sorry, produce new variants which has impacted Berkeley schools, leaving fragile students and their families still at risk. It was also mistakenly assumed that Virtual Academy could easily be replaced with BIS Independent Studies or with the Home Hospital Instruction Program. But we've discovered that neither of those programs provide daily social online interactions for K through five students with their teachers. With that being said, I don't understand why some school board members are insisting to terminate Virtual Academy while this pandemic is continuing. More so, you know that children in interaction for early childhood development, social interaction helps children develop strong language skills, creativity, social intelligence, and confidence. So please keep Virtual Academy open. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Ms. Kamika, followed by Adina.
All right, good evening. Dear Board of Education, we, the undersigned individuals, request that the Board of Education continue, I mean, excuse me, convene a task force to explore providing true reparations to current African-American students in Berkeley Unified School District. For too long, the impact of the slavery, of slavery and anti-black federal, state, local, and district policies have led to worse educational outcomes for African-American students, including here in Berkeley. For instance, African-American students are more likely to be disciplined, more likely to be identified as reading special, identified as needing special education services, more likely to drop out of school, less likely to attend gifted and talented programs, less likely to be a grade level in math and reading, less likely to graduate ready for college or a career.
Thank you. Next, we will have Adina Ishi, followed by Dan McDonough.
Hi, everyone. My name is Adina Ishi. I am a community member and I've been involved with the League of Women Voters for a long time. I'm not speaking on behalf of the League today, but I did want to speak in support of our previous speaker and her message to support convening a task force to explore providing true reparations to current African-American students in Berkeley Unified School District. As a Japanese-American whose grandparents benefited from reparations after the incarceration in World War II, I want to say that this is something that has been done before in our country and I'd love to see our school board take on this issue as well. Thank you all so much for your work. I know it's been a tough year.
Thank you, Adina. At next, we will have Dan McDonough, followed by Josh Daniels, former school board member.
Hey, greetings, school board. Yeah, hey, thanks again for your service this year. I know it's been a difficult year managing through a pandemic of fear. The reason I'm here tonight is because I want a few things on the record. First of which is that in January of 2022, when I made a public records access request, 45 out of 57 COVID-positive students were fully vaccinated. That's 80% of all student COVID-positive cases were fully vaxxed students. That's roughly the same percentage of vaxxed students, the student body at large, and also the same percentage of staff that tested positive. So is the vaccine effective if we have a one-to-one ratio of vaxxed to COVID-positive cases? You knew this back in January, but yet let an environment of fear and hostility persist for roughly 20% of the student body, including 46% of African-American students. You colluded with News Out at Berkeley Side and their reporter, Ellie Markovich, to withhold this information from public access, thereby contributing to more hate being thrown at the unvaccinated members of our community. Just want this to go on record. God bless each and every one of you. Have a terrific summer.
Thank you. The same to you. And next, we will have Josh Daniels, followed by Anne Song.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Josh. Welcome. We can hear you just fine. Welcome back. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your service. Trying to add my name to the support for the letter that was good when read to ask the board to create a task force to explore true reparations in Berkeley. There's been a lot of movement around on this topic around the country. Evanston, Illinois, to the city of Berkeley, the Georgetown University. And I think it is definitely time for BUSD to, you know, move on this issue as well. Just like with the soda tax and vote 16 and other issues where the district sort of was the leader, both in the region and the state and the nation. This is something that I think, you know, BUSD can definitely take the lead on. And it starts with the five of you voting to put forward a creative task force to move the issue forward. The letter contained that was emailed to all of you includes recommendations and requests for what the specific tasks of the task force would be. It would not just be something where, you know, the task force sort of deliberates and discusses, but actually comes forward with concrete, helpful and specific recommendations. So if you'll consider it and at a future board meeting, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Anne Song, followed by Jonas Lematory-Brownell. Hi, Anne. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Thank you so much to President Brown and Director Sinai for supporting the Virtual Education, Virtual Academy and K-3 Assisted Homeschool Online Programs. And I sincerely hope that the rest of the school board will follow your leadership and continue to fund these amazing programs, programs that have supported the health, safety, and education of medically vulnerable families such as mine. And at school board meeting, after school board meetings such as tonight, as well as at office hours, you've heard parents and students provide heartfelt testimonies of how these amazing programs have saved them when other options have failed. This program pays for itself and BUSD will actually lose money if the virtual education program is cut because families will be forced to go elsewhere. These programs are effective and essential for vulnerable families. It is a model program. It should be expanded, not cut. Please continue to fund the Virtual Education, Virtual Academy and K-3 Assisted Homeschool Online Programs and its teachers for the upcoming school year. Thank you and have a wonderful summer.
Thank you. You do the same. Next, we will have Jonas Lematory-Brownell, followed by Yvette Falarka.
Good evening, everyone here. My name is Jonas Lemetji-Brownell and I serve as BUSD's Herick Hospital teacher. I work with psychiatric hospitalized 12- to 18-year-olds who come to Herick Hospital in Berkeley from all over Northern California, including sometimes from Berkeley itself. I'm here to again say to our whole public school board, please preserve the virtual education programs and teachers in 2022, 23, so that precious people, including some of our most needfully COVID-cautious children, staff, and families, will still have this option to reduce their stress and risks and manifest meaningful education into next school year. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Next, we will have Yvette Falarka, followed by Anna Martinez.
Yvette Falarka, BIS-Assisted Homeschool Online Only Teacher and Equal Opportunity Now by Any Means Necessary Ian Bamcockis. I hope the school board maintains the vaccine mandate for all staff and students, but that doesn't substitute for also keeping our high-quality virtual education programs at Berkeley for the fall. We are teachers, students, and families whose health conditions require us to maintain stringent protections for COVID and from COVID infection as the level of community spread is higher than ever and it's more difficult to track community spread than ever before. We've all been told that we each need to make our own risk assessment, but will be denied the right to act on that assessment if BUSD eliminates the K-5 Virtual Academy and our online-only teaching positions. The K-8 Assisted Homeschool Program is not an adequate substitute for the daily K-5 Virtual Academy. Elementary-age students need their certified teacher and classroom community every day. And to take that away from them is playing politics with young people's education and their family's health. We in the virtual education community are part of this Berkeley school community too. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Anna Martinez, followed by Dinah Macy.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Anna Martinez and I'm a teacher at Berkeley Independent Study. We are asking you to keep this virtual learning program open for our children and our families. I currently have eight children in the program of my own since our family is medically vulnerable. Our high-quality virtual learning teachers are not teachers that we should get rid of. They have the expertise to provide quality education to all students regardless of their health status. They are a lifeline for me and for my family. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Dinah Macy, followed by Fay Renee Hollins. Hi, Dinah. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Dinah Macy and I'm a virtual educator at BIS. I'm here once again to speak on behalf of virtual learning next school year. Thank you to Director Sinai and President Brown for your continued support. Since March, everyone here has listened to families, students, and teachers advocate for the continuation of virtual learning. It's clear that there's a need. Many students are enrolled in this program due to COVID vulnerabilities. Many others are enrolled in this program because it's a better fit for their educational needs. Families are thrilled with the education their children are receiving. Why stop now? We can't leave these students behind. They need this option. Please continue to invest in virtual education so virtual teachers can continue to provide students the education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. At next, we will have Fay Renee Hollins, followed by our last public commenter for this public comment period, Michael Chang.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Welcome.
Wonderful, wonderful. Okay, this is Fay Renee Hollins. Thank you for all the support this program. We need it. I need it. I'm an in-home support person for my husband who has multiple myeloma. He's been diagnosed with it for the past four years. We're waiting for a kidney. I'm here mostly at home with all the violence that's happening at schools now and the COVID and this monkey stuff that's going around. We need this program. So please keep it going. Okay, I'm through.
Thank you, Fay Renee. Next, or for our final public commenter, we will have Michael Chang.
He dropped his hand. I'm not sure if he still wants to comment.
Okay, I think he just raised his hand.
Okay. I'll promote him. Okay.
Hi there. Apologize for that. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Welcome.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Hello, thank you for taking the time to chat with me. I'm, I would actually, my name is Mike Chang. I'm a BUSD parent, board member of the PTA Council, and attorney with the U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights, speaking as a private individual. I'd actually like to speak quickly on the Civil Rights and Complaints Office Report of June 10th of 2022. BUSD is still generating a high number of discrimination complaints, which appear to be disproportionately Title IX sex harassment-based complaints. Just in the spring, there was a trend of 127 complaints in the spring semester for a staff of three. That is a case to staff ratio of one to 42. And I can attest from personal experiences that these investigations are time-sensitive and very challenging. The report notes that all three staff members were on medical leave at different times. Moving forward, I'd like to see the board prioritize full staffing for this important office, which should be a linchpin of healthy and positive district climate and culture. Thank you.
Thank you as well. At next, we will move to committee comments. Is there anyone here for committee comments this evening? Seeing none, we will now move to union comments. Ms. Barrios, do we have any union comment videos? Or are there any union commenters in the audience today? If so, please raise your hand so that you may be given an opportunity to present your union comments.
Yes, we do have BFT union video.
We're ready to receive them whenever you are. Thank you, Ms. Barrios.
I apologize. I have to look for the video. I thought I had it up there, but give me one second.
Oh, that's okay, Ms. Barrios. Take your time and I could also pull it up on my end if necessary. I'll pull it up on my end, okay?
Okay, sorry about, thank you.
That's okay. Guys, if you can, just give me a thumbs up that lets me know if you can hear my sound.
Unified School Board, after many Dr. Stevens and the Berkeley Unified School Board. After many years, our district is finally ready to make changes to our middle school assignment policies that will put students first and allow our district to serve all of our students better. For too long, our half-choice, half-zone has led to inequitable outcomes. The structural flaw of our current assignment system cannot be overcome, even with smaller class sizes and a seven-period day.
The Longfellow educators are almost unanimous in supporting this change and I encourage you to read the letter they sent. They make the case that this decision needs to happen now, not just an intention of a decision, but to actually make the decision this June. This will allow all three middle schools in our wider community ample time to prepare so that the twenty-three, twenty-four transition actually happens on time and thoughtfully. There will be staffing and programmatic changes that can't wait until a decision in November. There will be enrollment projections that will be more complicated than usual. We need to be able to tell our community partners that this is definitely happening, not just that we have a model if it happens. There will not be any new information between now and November that would change anything with regards to this decision. Giving all these reasons, the board should vote today. I also want to update the board on contract negotiations. Unfortunately, BFT and the USC, the USD still do not have an agreement and will be beginning of the year on an expired contract. We have not heard Actually, BFT and the USC, the USD still do not have an agreement and will be beginning of the year on an expired contract. We have not heard back on key proposals including class size, compensation for necessary meetings outside the duty day, elementary subbing and of course, compensation in general. Fortunately, the state has increased the ongoing dollars to schools, but unfortunately, the cost of living continues to increase as well. Our educators just came off the hardest year of their teaching careers and are experiencing rising costs like never before. Everyone went above and beyond just to make sure that there was a teacher in every classroom, not during the surge, but throughout the year. We supported our students and their mental health needs crisis after crisis. We need to hear back from the district so we can focus on getting our classrooms ready for the new school year and dedicate our energy to welcoming our students back to school. This is how we want our energy to be spent, but we need competitive pay and reasonable class size agreements to keep us in what has become an even more challenging work environment. Thank you.
I'll stop sharing. And are there any other unique comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to board member comments. Director Sinai, are you ready with your comments?
Sure. Just briefly, thank everybody for coming out. I look forward to the conversations that we're going to have tonight. I want to thank all the group of folks who came forward with the letter supporting the district to look at reparations within the district. I have been very interested and supportive of the reparation works that's been going on locally as well as across the state and the country. So I look forward to having ongoing discussions around that. I would look like us to consider partnering with the city as we embark on discussions around reparations. So I look forward to, you know, how that conversation continues to evolve. And so again, thank you folks for initiating it and bringing it forward to us. I also just want to take a minute to mention a little bit about the vaccine items that are on consent. While I would value keeping a vaccine mandate for our students, I'm supporting the items, the policy change that Vice President Babett and Director Alper have come forward with the Policy Committee to step back that policy because fundamentally, when the state decided not to enforce the vaccine mandate, it basically tied our hands to be able to enforce such a policy. We are unable to require students to vaccine or test and withhold education for those who don't do it. So I think we should continue our strong messaging that COVID has not left our community and all the research shows that vaccines have helped to lessen the severity of the illness when people get it and lessen the hospitalization and the death and continue to encourage our students and our families to get vaccinated. But for the reason of not being able to enforce it and not being able nor desiring to withhold education from our students, I'm supporting the items that are on consent. So I think that's it for this evening. I look forward to the conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sinai. Director Alper, would you like to go next?
Sure. Just briefly, I thank you Director Sinai for those comments about the vaccine policy and on the, and thank you for the letter and for the people commented about the reparations task force. And it just occurred to me, in addition to, yes, thinking that this would be something to partner with the city on, this could also be, probably should be something that we try out at our new workshop format that we discussed at the special meeting last night because this seems like a perfect opportunity to say, here's a potentially exciting new initiative. Let's do some kind of workshop with staff to figure out what it would involve, what it, what priority level it should be given, what what it might displace in terms of time or resources or what additional resources we can generate for it. So I've kind of known in the background about this being in the works as a proposal in Berkeley, but I'm anxious to learn more and thank everybody who contributed to the letter that we got sent tonight. Thanks.
Thanks, Director Alper. Director Vasudev, would you like to go next?
Thank you, President Brown. Just wanted to echo the same sentiments as my colleague Director Alper. Curious to learn more and to see if we could either workshop reparations or join forces with the city on their work too. And I also wanted to echo the comments made by Director Sinai. You know, I've been very vocal in my support for mandates and I was very disappointed when eight seventy-one got pulled, which would have been a stronger state mandate and also disappointed when the governor's mandate was delayed, but understand the real challenges around implementation. I think we've seen that in districts like LA Unified and San Diego Unified who both passed very strong vaccination mandates but faced, you know, a lot of implementation challenges. And so for that reason, I will also support the recommendation of my colleagues, but I'm disheartened that at the state level, there's not something stronger to help school districts and to help children get vaccinated. And so I also just wanted to thank everybody who's showing up to our meetings. I know it's summer break for a lot of families and it's great to see how many people are engaged still with us during the last couple of weeks of school board meetings. So I wanted to thank everybody for showing up and sharing your public comments with us. I also wanted to share some exciting news about COVID related legislation. There's an Assembly Bill twenty-one zero seven that successfully passed the Senate Committee on Business, Professions and Economic Development this week. Hasn't gone on a lot of press, but it's an important bill because it will allow any adult that has received appropriate training and is acting under the director of a lab or ordering physician to perform the COVID nineteen tests, which is the antigen tests in schools. So in other words, instead of depending on vendors solely, schools could now use legally parent volunteers or classified staff to conduct the actual testing, which will decrease the cost of COVID nineteen testing in schools, especially if there are future surges. So it's actually a really exciting piece of legislation and it seems to be moving along quickly and it will provide that flexibility that I think Superintendent Stevens has rightly pointed out in a lot of our meetings around COVID nineteen, the flexibility to really staff up and gear up when, when we have a surge, right? To be able to bring on board parents or, or classified staff to actually help with testing and then to be able to roll things back when there are, there are low cases. And so I'm excited by it and I'm excited about anything that makes it more affordable for schools to keep their COVID nineteen mitigation. I'm also looking forward to our presentation tonight on mental health because that continues to be one of the largest public health issues right now that our schools are facing. So I'm really excited about that, that presentation tonight and also about our conversation around the middle school assignment system. So thank you everyone for coming and for being engaged during your summer break. We really appreciate you seeing you all here.
Thank you, Director Vasudev. Vice President Babett, are you ready?
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I want to wish everyone a happy summer. I definitely have summeritis and can't wait to get a moment to refresh. I read a funny post from Rachael Lee's Facebook page, which I posted on my school board page, which said, "Teachers are not off for the summer. They are in recovery." Well said, and that extends to all of our administrators and support staff. I want to thank the Berkeley Public Schools Fund for the amazing STEM camp that so many are participating in this summer area for the Step Up Academy and the traditional summer school program led by Principal Taylor this year. Thank you to all of the programs out there, including many of our city programs for continuing to work to meet our students' academic and enrichment needs in our summer school programs. I want to remind everyone that free breakfast and lunch is being served at several sites. I read an email that someone was concerned that their neighbor was going hungry. And so no child in Berkeley or our neighboring cities has to be hungry. So please check the website for food locations nearest you. Lastly, I want to say thank you to everyone that supported the reparations task force request in BUSD. Most of us know reparations are long overdue as a nation and that reparations have been paid to so many other communities historically and are being registered for currently to those experiencing displacement. Recognizing Juneteenth as a holiday is a good step forward, but that benefits all. The communities whose ancestors have endured the years of cruelty on so many systemic levels, which still impact society today, should be compensated. I remember when student director Swan interviewed me for an article on reparations and I mentioned that slave owners were paid reparations for the humans they could no longer consider property. The gasp on the other side of that phone was exactly my gasp so many years ago when I learned that part of history. So I firmly believe that we should be a part of the political will change. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice President Babett. For my comments, I simply want to thank all of those who came out tonight to the Board of Education meeting, even during the summertime. We know that this has been a difficult and challenging year, but you all are continuing to show your support to your students as well as the district by being here this evening. So thank you so much for taking the time out of your busy schedules to be here with us. Additionally, I'd like to thank everyone who offered public comments to the Board of Education this evening. Specifically, I'd like to give an appreciation to those who offered comments in regards to reparations as well as thank my board colleagues for their responses to those comments this evening. Berkeley, BUSD, has been a leader, as was mentioned earlier this evening. Berkeley has been a leader in many things, right? Desegregating our schools as well as the soda tax. And I'm excited and honored that we have been called to rise to the occasion of being the leader once more. So thank you for those of you, the community members who work to bring this idea here to Berkeley Unified School District and to those of you who are pushing on us to be leaders and to do more for our Black and African American students and families here in Berkeley Unified School District. I received the comments of Director Sinai as well as Director Alper in that the request to create a workshop style or figure out ways that we can partner with the city. My recommendation would be that we first create an ad hoc committee that works specifically to help prepare this task force or figures out ways to liaison with the city. I would definitely be interested in serving as a task force member. And as the time comes for us to identify ad hoc committee members, we will definitely be able to do that. So once again, thank you all for that push and for bringing it to us in Berkeley Unified School District and positioning, positioning us to continue to be the leaders in all movements, but specifically in this one. I'm excited this evening about our discussion and our action items and look forward to the conversation about middle school rezoning and reassignment as well as the conversation about, the update rather, about mental health. At this time, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Stevens for his comments whenever he is ready.
Thank you so much, President Brown. I'd love to start just by acknowledging that June is LGBTQ's last five months. You see lots of rainbow flags here on our display and I'm so grateful to be working in a district that unlike so many states around the country right now, is standing up for welcoming and inclusive communities. I learned recently that this June is the fifty-second anniversary of the very first pride parade. Didn't realize that it went all the way back to the year nineteen seventy-one, year after Stonewall. And again, just to sort of note, here in Berkeley, we are standing up for inclusive communities, standing against the rathload of legislation that we're seeing in a number of states that are essentially prohibiting the teaching of all of our young people and their families in our schools. I also want to recognize that Monday is a school holiday for a very special occasion, that is Juneteenth. Director Bab, Vice President Babett's display proudly shows that Juneteenth is on its way. It's something that we were glad to be able to honor last year for the very first time and to include it in our calendar of holidays. Also want to welcome our summer school staff and students to their schools and we're very proud to have a whole range of programs available to our young people this summer, including, just to mention a few things, an elementary program at Berkeley Arts Magnet, Rosa Parks in Washington, as well as CTE maker camps taking place in a number of locations. We learned recently that the FDA has approved vaccines for children ages six months to four years old as a next step in the approval process that will make its way to the Center for Disease Control and then we imagine on the state health authorities. We're already in the process of conducting preliminary planning with our City of Berkeley partners to conduct vaccine clinics at our three child development centers, King, Hopkins and Franklin. And we will be distributing more information to our pre-K families about vaccination opportunities for our youngest learners. Our school meal program has already started. I know it was already mentioned, I believe, by Vice President Babett. And just to share a little bit more about our summer school, summer meal schedule. Breakfasts are available in the same way that they have been for free over the last two years. Time for breakfast pickup is between nine and nine thirty and lunch pickup is between twelve thirty and one o'clock at these locations, at Berkeley Arts Magnet, Washington Elementary, Rosa Parks, Longfellow and Berkeley High School. If you have any questions, please reach out to our Student Nutrition Services Department. I know that they would be very happy to help you. We have a range of interesting discussion items this evening, including for action, an item on the middle school student assignment policy. That especially will, that rather will be structured in two ways. One is to prompt a decision by board members about the model of a policy change and then as well, sort of to settle the question about whether or not we will sort of select a final model tonight or bring the matter back for further consideration sometime in the fall. And then to describe a little bit of our budget. Last week, there was a robust discussion that took place about a variety of reductions and priorities for the general fund as well as for new state grant revenue. This evening is a public hearing on the general fund particularly. And then we are anticipating further budget discussions probably to come on June twenty-ninth about a particular block of money called the discretionary block grant. This evening, however, we're going to call forward three items from that discretionary block grant discussion and specifically, those will be questions about the K five Virtual Academy, about supplemental staff for the assistant homeschool program and as well about the addition of five teachers to reduce K five class size down to twenty-three or lower. So for folks who are interested in any of those topics, we encourage you to stick around for discussion and, and the board action. So with that, President Brown, I'm going to turn it back to you. Thanks so much.
Thank you as well, Superintendent Stevens. At this time, we will move to approve the consent calendars. There are motions to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move.
Moved by Director Alper. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Vice President Babett. Is there any unreadiness? Hearing none, Ms. Badios, can you please call the roll?
Yes, I can. Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Vice President Babett?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. The motion passes. Next, we will move to our first and only discussion item of the evening and that will be the update for the Mental Health Services for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. And here to join us for this presentation is both Dr. Shelley and Jonathan Maddox. And so Superintendent Stevens, if you'd like, you can welcome them in your own way. Or if Associate Superintendent Aurelio, if you'd like, you can welcome them in your own, in their, in your own way or they can just take over. It's up to you.
Thank you, President Brown. I am going to just introduce our Director of Student Services, Dr. Philip Shelley, and he will introduce to our, then later on in the presentation. I will let you know the board just, you know, Dr. Shelley is doing the thing with some respiratory things, so he might take it slow. Be gentle with him this evening.
Don't tell him, huh? We can't hear you. Say it again. Don't do any of that.
Exactly, exactly.
We'll keep those things to him.
But I'm here. If he needs me, I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ruben. Good evening, President Brown, Vice President Babett, Directors Alper, Sinai and Vasudev, Superintendent Stevens and the Berkeley community. Thank you for allowing me and my co-presenter Jonathan Maddox from the City of Berkeley to present to you tonight about the district's mental health support. Before I begin the presentation, I know Ruben touched on it, but I wanted to let you know that I'm working through a breathing issue that I'm having and may need to take deep breaths periodically during the presentation. And so I wanted to let you know And so I wanted to let you know as to not distract from the presentation. Okay, next slide, please. So this is a, this is the outline of the presentation. We'll begin with examining the 21-22 year review. We'll look at a little bit of data. Then we'll discuss the support plan before transitioning to the Mental Health Student Services Act grant that we have in our partnership with the City of Berkeley. Next slide, please. So currently during the 21-22 school year, we've had several partners, which includes Bay Area Community Resources, Child Therapy Institute, Lifelong Medical, Nairobi Institute, and of course, the City of Berkeley, BACR, CTI, and Lifelong Medical. They operate exclusively at our elementary schools. Nairobi Institute is at our secondary schools, the high schools and the middle schools. Excuse me. And the City of Berkeley, of course, has the Health Center at the high school, and they support BTA. Now, one of the things we were able to do this year is extend some of the coverage that we have from BACR, and we added John Muir and Sylvia Mendez to receive support from BACR. We also were able to increase the mental health FTE at several of our schools. So for example, Malcolm X increased from 1.0 to 1.2. John Muir went from a .5 to a 1.0. Sylvia Mendez went from a .5 to a 1.0. And at Emerson, which had a .4, we added an intern, so he went from a .4 to another .4 plus an intern. And then one of the things I was able to do was negotiate and increase in the funding from the City of Berkeley's prevention, early intervention, was increased to $110,000 from $55,000. Next slide, please. So this next slide represents some data from BACR, CTI, and Lifelong Medical that operate at our elementary schools. These are the number of students who received mental health support. I won't go through each school, but you can see what the, you know, kind of get an idea of the numbers for this year. Each site had onsite mental health support. But additionally, for BAM and Washington, they also had 188 students participate in group sessions as well. And so when we look at Rosa Parks, their mental health support provider, plus an intern, provided individual counseling for students, family counseling, and mental health consultation to caregivers and school staff. They also provided full class support to several classrooms, and they tried to tailor those needs to the needs of the classroom and doing community building and also regulation strategies such as zones of regulation and social-emotional learning. Additionally, they also had nineteen additional students participate in class sessions. Like I said before, BACR supported the other elementary schools. They did whole class tier-one supports. They also had individual and group therapy, family consultation, check-ins and check-out, crisis intervention, and classroom presentations as well. For BACR, they use different therapy modalities, as well as playground and classroom support to develop skills and health. We're still waiting on their group therapy session numbers, but they should be forthcoming soon. Next slide, please. So this next slide is our partnership with the Nairobi Institute, which does dynamic mindfulness. Nairobi currently serves Berkeley High School, BTA, King, Longfellow, and Willard Middle Schools. The Dynamic Mindfulness is an evidence-based, trauma-informed program that strengthens stress resilience and social-emotional learning. Their two vehicles were providing live, online sessions and in-person sessions, and also training and coaching. It may be hard for you to see on it. I hope it's not hard, but you'll see they broke down their data into three sections, August, December, January to March, and April to June. The number of hours that they spent at the school sites increased in each section from 37.5 hours to 51.5 to 70.75, for a total of 202.75 hours during the 21-22 school year. Additionally, they spent 43 hours providing dynamic mindful training and coaching. Now, the training and coaching, that's for building dynamic mindfulness capacity among teachers and staff, so that they have the skills for, A, their own self-care, self-stress resilience, and personal sustainability, and B, professional application with students for their emotion regulation, as well as social-emotional learning. When asked, Nairobi also applied their training and coaching model for building dynamic mindfulness capacity among student peer leaders, with structured opportunities for application in conflict resolution, peer mediation, and leading the D-Mind practices in their classroom. Another thing is they provided videos to all the school sites they served, and they even did yoga sessions for the independent study. Our other partner is the City of Berkeley. They have the Health Center on the campus where they provide crisis assessment, short- and long-term therapy, site groups. They also link, community linkage to services within the community. They're currently doing a stakeholder engagement process with the high school, and they attend many of the cost and other meetings to identify student needs. Now, the Health Center is currently working on its data, and they'll be providing that to us soon. They actually, their mental health data is put together by UCSF. So we're still waiting on that data, but we should have that soon. Next slide, please. Now, these are the partners that we're going to be using. It could grow, but right now, these are partnerships for 22-23 school year. BACR is going to be at Craigmont, Emerson, John Muir, Malcolm X, Oxford, Ruth Akey, Sylvia Mendez, and Thousand Oaks. CTI will continue at BAM and Washington. Lifelong will be working with Rosa Parks. The City of Berkeley will still have the Health Center and support BTA. And Nairobi will continue with the middle and high schools. We also have partnerships with local colleges and universities to provide interns at the middle schools. And our high school and middle schools have BUSD counselors who work at the high schools and the middle schools. Next slide, please. So for this particular slide, we're looking at some of the increases for this upcoming school year. For the 21-22 school year, the district paid BACR approximately $365,000 for their services. That is going to increase in 22-23 school year to approximately $592,000. CTI and Lifelong was about $112,000 during 21-22. That's expected to increase to approximately $141,000. As I mentioned earlier, one of the things that we were able to get increased again was the, from the PEI from the City of Berkeley. So that's going to support some of that. But for the sites, for their contribution to their, to mental health, their cost is going to remain at the 21-22 school year rate. So there'll be no increase in the cost of them. The district office is going to pay the difference from the carryover funds that we have in the 22-23 school year. So for the sites, again, the costs remain the same. The district's going to pick up the added cost so that they can continue with the support that they had in place. Next slide, please. Now, one of the things that we want to do is to ensure that every elementary site starts the year with at least a 1.0 FTE. So for example, I mentioned earlier that Emerson had a .4 FTE in an intern. So I've already negotiated with BACR to increase that to a 1.0 FTE. So every site is going to have a 1.0 FTE, a person there five days a week, six and a half hours a day, except for the sites that already have at least a 1.2. So those will remain in place. They'll continue to get services in the same manner. One of the things I'm negotiating is to bring additional interns for our secondary and also for our elementary schools. I've been working with BACR, and for the interns, that's $13,000 per intern is the cost. We're going to also bring back the Mental Health Peer Education Program, which is also known as the MEAT Program, back to the Berkeley campus. So that's another thing that we'll be adding on. And then there's the MHSSA grant, that substantial amount of funding that will be supporting the district in our partnership with the City of Berkeley. Next slide, please. So again, this is, this is the beginning of our collaboration between the City of Berkeley and Berkeley Unified School District. Jonathan is going to jump in in a few moments to begin to talk about the grant in a little more detail. Next slide, please. But what I want to do first is to introduce you to the members of the MHSSA Grant Steering Committee. So as you'll see from the list, it's made up of BUSD staff members, City of Berkeley staff, and then we also have a parent rep, a student rep, a community rep, and then our consultant who we work with. So we have some diversity on the staff and different perspectives. Again, the steering committee will work through the initial phases of the grant and putting together the plan. And then, and then we'll proceed. Hopefully, we'll have everything in place, our plan in place by September. But again, Jonathan's going to take over. So with that, I'd like to introduce you to Jonathan Maddox from the City of Berkeley, and he's going to begin on this next slide. Thank you. Next slide.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? I want to say hello to Superintendent Stevens and President Brown and all of the board members and those who are on the panel. As Philip said, thank you, Philip. And as Philip said, my name is Jonathan Maddox. I'm the Director of Family, Youth, and Children's Mental Health Services for the City of Berkeley. And so I just want to say thank you for having me, and I'm looking forward to continuing to build on and enhance the relationship that BUSD and Berkeley Mental Health have together, in particular through this grant. The goal of the MHSSA grant really is to identify, you know, our intended destination for the resources of this grant is to invest in high-quality, accessible, equitable, and sustainable resources to support the mental health and well-being of BUSD students, in particular those that are underserved, those that are inappropriately served, and those that are not able to access our care and to support the staff. We can't leave the staff out of this. Staff are doing a tremendous job teaching and supporting the students on campus. And so the resources that are available through this grant are also there to support the staffing. But I think most importantly, it's really an opportunity for us to forge a stronger collaboration between Berkeley Mental Health and BUSD. I've been here since about August of 2019, and then shortly after I came, COVID hit. So we all went into shelter in place, and so it's been sort of a challenge to collaborate. But I think it's very fortuitous for all of us that this grant, which was, whose inception came in 2019, really is providing an opportunity for us to address many of the impacts that have come through COVID. Next slide, please. So the question is, what is the MHSSA grant? Basically, it was passed in 2019 to do a couple of things. One, to establish partnerships between county behavioral health departments and offices of education or local school districts. Two, it was, and I'm jumping to number three, so I'll be bouncing around. It really was to expand access to mental health services to students across the state of California. I think as someone has mentioned earlier, one of the largest needs across sort of our country right now was really getting accessible, high-quality mental health care. So the MHSSA grant was designed to address that. And so in response to that, the MHSOAC has been sending out a series of grants to local jurisdictions to be able to support and identify needs that exist related to mental health care. As I mentioned before, it's very fortuitous for us that in light of COVID, these resources are available to us. This is a four-year grant. We, in conjunction with BUSD, wrote an application, and we're granted $2.5 million to be spent over four years to do the things that has been previously mentioned. And I just think, I think, not I think, I know this provides a tremendous opportunity for us to identify and address mental health needs of students and staff that exist on the campuses. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned earlier, the purpose of the grant is to improve access to care, improve our partnership, and then promote mental health as an opportunity to engage our underrepresented, underserved communities who were in particular adversely impacted by COVID. We know that Black communities and Brown communities, you know, the LGBTQ community and those whose primary language is not English have been in it, what's the word, have been impacted more than others related to COVID. So we're really trying to identify ways that we can support them. And I think most important is really trying to identify sustainable ways to support the mental health and welfare of students and staff across, in our case, BUSD. The fusion of this grant money is going to be used to support the program plan that we're going to put in place. And our hope is that as this plan is rolled out over the course of four years, that there will be opportunities to identify sustainable ways to continue the services and processes and relationships that are working well. Next slide. All right. So what is the process of the grant? So currently, in order for us to actually begin the process of implementing the grant, we had to convene a steering committee, which was made up of City of Berkeley and BUSD staff and program managers. We have parents on the committee, a student, and community stakeholders. And what's also very interesting is that the actual steering committee has the opportunity to transition into becoming the governing board. Once this plan is accepted and moves into the program operation phase, they will be the governing board that actually identifies and watches over and ensures that the program plan that's been identified is being implemented. We began meeting back in April of this year, so we've been meeting for almost the past two months, reviewing stakeholder engagement data, looking at sort of information that we have about what the needs look like across BUSD, and where are the opportunities to collaborate. We've been identifying strengths, needs, and opportunities related to the mental health services that exist, and new ideas and creative ideas that we could use this money to actual support on the different campuses. The steering committee is tasked with creating a program plan, which is really identifying what are the deliverables for this actual money that are going to be identified. A couple of things that were identified in the actual application that have to be done is, one, we will, BUSD will be required to hire a mental health coordinator, who will, whose responsibility will be to support the implementation of the plan and to be a primary stakeholder and relationship builder with the Mental Health Division. A second thing is, in the first year of the actual plan, there has to be a 12-month strategic assessment, looking at sort of what are the needs, strengths, and opportunities related to mental health services across the district. And then lastly, it will be to sort of figure out, figure out ways that we can, one, communicate this plan across the district, how we're going to actually do the deliverables that have been identified, and then present and update a refined budget. Next slide, please. All right. In our attempt to increase access to mental health care, our hope is to really strengthen some of the things that Philip has identified. There are services that currently exist across the district that can be fortified and strengthened by just adding maybe monies to their budget. So that's one of the things that we're looking at. We're really looking at, based on the feedback, how do we enhance culturally responsive navigation services for families that are interested in mental health care but don't know where to go, don't know how to access services, or maybe have private insurance? And so we're looking at ways that we can support them and give them warm hands off to mental health providers. There was, as it was mentioned earlier, there's an idea about mental health peer education program maybe being expanded across the district. And then I mentioned earlier about conducting the comprehensive assessment and plan. But we're really hoping to, as a part of this process, do a staggered implementation of the deliverables that are identified, really looking at how we can build on lessons learned and how we can sort of identify and address any barriers that may exist as we move through the four-year process. And then, next slide, please. Last update, last slide. So current status update is, we've been meeting for the past couple of months. We are currently identifying the concrete deliverables that we're going to implement across BUSD. We've been reviewing the stakeholder feedback. We've had several reports that we've been able to look at and garner data from about needs and opportunities to look at and support mental health services across the district. We're also managing and looking at what are some more universal versus targeted interventions? Some ideas that have come up are, we're clearly, we are clear that everyone wants training on the steering committee, that training to be accessible to students and staff, administrators, teachers, security guards around topics like mental health first aid, potentially trauma-informed schools, so that staff are able to identify not only their own sort of, their own response to their own mental health care, but how to identify students who may be struggling and then to usher response to their own mental health care, but how to identify students who may be struggling and then to usher them into appropriate services. We are also working on sort of moving toward our communication plan across the district, how we're going to actually implement the plan, and then lastly, managing the budget. So once again, we are very excited. I am very excited about this opportunity to collaborate with Berkeley Unified. I look forward to serving the students and families that are participating in BUSD. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you both, Dr. Shelley and Mr. Maddox. Thank you for being here from the city and here to present on this update tonight. I'm sure I speak for the rest of the board to say that this is definitely a necessary and a timely presentation. And so we appreciate the both of you, Dr. Shelley and Mr. Maddox, for presenting to us tonight. With, that's typical with our discussions, this is the opportunity for the Board of Education to ask a few questions. And so, Board, if you have questions, please raise your hand at this time so that you can be identified. I, I do have a question, so I'll start, if that's okay, while the rest of the board is raising their hand. Mr. Maddox, when you were speaking earlier, when we were talking about the deliverables to implement, you brought up enhancing culturally responsive navigation support for students and families. And I wanted to learn a little bit more about what specifically you, what specific plans you all have in regards to enhancing the culturally responsive navigation.
So, so that's a great question. So thank you. So some ideas that have come up so far are to look at how we could support, and I don't know what this acronym stands for, is OFFE?
That's OFEE, the Office of Family Equity Engagement.
Forgive me for not trying to say that, because I didn't know. So one idea was because there's flexible use of the fund, was really trying to look at how we might be able to partner with the OFEE office and ensure that, for example, there are OFEE staff at all of the schools that may not currently have them, so that they could be available to sort of connect with kids and families and then walk them through what the steps might be to connect with mental health services. That could be maybe a referral to Berkeley Mental Health. That could be supporting them to connect with their own private insurance. It could be to sort of connect them with services that currently exist on their child's school campus. So that's one idea. Another idea that came up was, you know, should there be a district level, for lack of a better term, case manager or navigators who are available to a range of schools? And they would do a very similar job where they would sort of get referrals from local schools. They would identify maybe what their insurance is, what the needs are, and then do a warm handoff to a mental health provider. So those were some of the ideas, based on the feedback that we got from parents. Because as you could imagine, a lot of black and brown parents were communicating that they didn't feel like they were adequately supported or even understood where the resources are. So we actually want to be able to ensure that they can access a resource that can hand them off to something that's going to meet their needs in a culturally responsive way.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. And if it is okay to add, I know that we have a number of partners that you mentioned in the beginning, including, you know, partnerships with the city of Berkeley for our health center at Berkeley High. You also mentioned BACR and Lifelong. And I was wondering, in those partnerships, as we move to ensure that we have culturally responsive, not only navigation, but culturally responsive services, is there a commitment that we are looking to receive from these partners to ensure that the services that they, that they provide are done in a culturally responsive manner?
Is that for me or for Philip?
For Dr. Shelley, but if you have an answer to that, that would be nice.
Yeah, so I, I meet, I meet more regularly with BACR than the other providers. But I do have opportunities to provide input on what our needs are. And then they respond according to what we're looking for. And so I think that's an opportunity for us to, to push them on those things, to provide the type of support that we're looking for. So there is an opportunity for us to do so.
Thank you. That, that's good to know, because, you know, culturally responsive navigating isn't necessarily the same thing as the services that we receive. And although we can have, you know, strong opportunities for navigation, its services are not. Well, I won't say that, but we want to ensure that the services that our families receive are appropriate as well. And so thank you, Dr. Shelley, for that response.
I mean, if you don't mind, I would add, speaking for the city of Berkeley, it is one of my values and goals to ensure that I'm hiring staff that reflect the communities that we serve, whether it be language, whether it be orientation, whether it be race and culture. And so we, at the city of Berkeley, in my program, which is Family, Youth and Children's, we are, that is one of our driving values. And so when we are interviewing or applying for positions, that is something that we are looking for, staff who can meet community members in a culturally responsive way and support them in the ways, provide mental health care in a way that makes sense to those communities.
Oh, and I just want to add one more thing. Jonathan and I, we meet, we started out meeting once a week, but we've been meeting every other week. And so we've had some great conversation around many of these issues.
Thank you both for your responses. I really appreciate them. Director Vasudeva, followed by Director Saini.
I thank you so much for this great presentation. I'm going to follow up of three questions, and I wanted to follow up on the great point that President Brown brought up around culturally responsive mental health. And in particular, I spoke to the multilingual program at the high school. And first, I just want to acknowledge and thank the city of Berkeley for your partnership with our schools and for all the support that you're providing to us around mental health. And we, you know, it, it really is going to take the city and the school district working together. And I, I am so grateful for our collaboration. My question is around, you know, multilingual support, particularly for students in our multilingual program or in our newcomer program in the middle school. In speaking to, you know, teachers from those programs, what I've heard is that oftentimes children are coming from situations of trauma, either because they're here and they're separated from, from their families, or they've lost loved ones due to the pandemic, right? But a lot of them are living in very traumatic situations, and many times their teachers are their families. And so I asked, you know, one of the, the teachers at the multilingual program at the high school, well, what she said, you know, if, what kind of support do you think would help the students be more successful, you know, general, generally? And she said, the biggest thing that we're missing is that group mental health support that used to exist. And she talked about a program called Young Adults Living Life. And I guess it might have been a city program, so maybe Mr. Maddox, you know more about it. But in particular, she said, you know, what we're missing is multilingual group mental health, because that was really important, especially when there's children coming from, you know, situations where there's a lot of stigma around one-on-one mental health. So how do you do more group mental health? And then around the same notion, you know, I know the other, you know, I work in public health and I know one of my colleagues works really closely in, in pushing out mental health first aid certifications in different high schools, particularly as we've seen a lot of rise in, you know, concerns around, you know, how students are doing on mental, mental health. So some districts will do something like train all the sophomores on, you know, help them get certified in mental health first aid. Or they'll choose a cohort, cohort of students that might be in a public health kind of focused, you know, study area. But they'll select a cohort of students to train around mental health first aid. And I'm wondering if that kind of thinking is going, is, you know, happening in this group? So, you know, mental health first aid, like who are you thinking would benefit most from the training, particularly at the secondary level? And then multilingual support, particularly for newcomer students or English language learners. And then my third question is a really specific one for you, Dr. Shelley. I just wanted to know in terms of the Nairobi Institute, how many middle schoolers were actually served this year by the, by that organization? So I don't know if you have that data, but those are my, my three questions.
So I, I can take, I can take the third question first. The, the data that I was given by Nairobi wasn't broken down by student, because most of their work, they do a full class. So they're working with full classes, so they gave it to me by hour, what hour they were at this site, what hour at this site, and then the classrooms they went to. They may be able to provide that. I'd have to check back with them. But like I said, most of their work was, was full class of work.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and then what was the next question?
The multilingual, uh, mental health support, particularly English language learners or, yes, that exists in a group setting like it used to before with young adults living life.
I, I have to, so I have to, again, I have to check with our partners on, you know, the, who their providers are. I know that most of the providers that are at the site, they predate me. And so I know specifically, most of the sites were asking for the same person. So even when I was looking at changing FTEs, they were saying, listen, I want the person I had, I want to keep that person. But one of the opportunities that we did have specifically, as we were adding new folks, was for Sylvia Mendez. So when we talked about adding a new support counselor at Sylvia Mendez, that was one of the things that I worked with BACR on making sure that that person was bilingual and spoke Spanish. So we were able to get that, so for Sylvia Mendez.
That's awesome. Yeah, I'm curious if we could do the same for the newcomer program at King and then for the multilingual program at the high school. Since it seems like it used to exist before, particularly with the city partnership. And I don't know if in the stakeholder group, there is representation from one of those programs, but I think it would be really good to just have that perspective, particularly for students that come from backgrounds where there's still a strong stigma against mental health.
Yeah. No, that's a great question. I think it's important for you and the board to know that there is a staff member at the Berkeley High Health Center who works directly with the newcomer program. He provides groups, he does linkages to the Health Center for Mental Health Care. And so what, what you're asking for and describing does exist at the high school. So, but what I will say is that there is an opportunity for that to happen at the middle schools. I think one of the things that's important to me is I've had two staff promote out of their direct service or therapist positions. And so I'm looking for bilingual staff who can actually go into the schools, middle schools in particular, provide mental health care and then do warm handoffs as these students matriculate through their academic career and end up at the high school where there's much more structured and identified supports. But I'd be very open to sort of hearing how Family, Youth and Children's Services could partner with BUSD to address that need in your middle schools. And then to your question about peer mental health programs.
Well, first aid certifications.
Excuse me?
And the mental health first aid certification for students, like.
Yeah, that's pretty much, I mean, that's, that's an example of a peer support program. But yeah, so mental health first aid is one, trauma-informed schools is another, ways to sort of train young people to understand the signs, the symptoms, the impact of mental health care, and then support their peers. So there is an opportunity through the grant to finance that service to, we, we would just need to sort of one land on, that's what we want to do. And it sounds like we are, because that was some of the identified interventions that came out of the stakeholder group. But to Dr. Shelley's point, there's a tremendous opportunity at the high school to implement the MEAT program, which is a collaboration with the city of Berkeley. We funded that program. And it, it hasn't been implemented for the past two years, but there's, excuse me, there's an opportunity for it to resurrect itself and be implemented at the high school. So I'm very much looking forward to what Berkeley High administration is going to do to support that and take their resource and support their community, so.
Thank you.
Director Saini and then Vice President Barry.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I've been eagerly waiting for it and really excited about the opportunity with the grant. And Dr. Shelley, I really want to appreciate you for being here and struggling through. You're doing great. So thank you for, thank you for being here. I'm, I'm working really hard not to do the been there, done that, you know, because having been involved in mental health services in the school since 1997, I, you know, we go through these planning processes, you know, every few years. And so I'm hoping that this one, you know, will kind of jog us into a new, a new level of action. I know that we've shared the reports that the district and the city did a few years ago and really look at PBIS, Positive Behavioral Support, as also being a theme that goes through. And I share the enthusiasm that Director Vasudeva said, when it comes to group and universal care, because we don't have the resources to provide one-on-one therapy to every student who needs it. And we also need to be able to figure out ways to support our teachers in the classroom and looking at the classroom environment. So I'm excited about what the opportunities could bring and hope that we both kind of dust off some of the research that was done and then expand and enhance it with the new, you know, new research that's gone on. And we're really looking at the trauma-informed schools is an opportunity that we have. I have a couple of questions. I shared the question, I share the question, I think that Director Vasudeva had, in trying to understand more about what our middle schools are receiving, because I think that's where there's a huge need. I know that we've got, I was going to say a decent amount, it's not really a decent amount. We have, you know, more one-on-one, you know, therapy opportunities at the elementary school, and we have the health center at the high school. And I'd like to know, you know, kind of as we go down the path, what is it we're, we're doing? And, you know, we've got Ms. Karen, Ms. Rosina at Longfellow, who has a host of interns and has a model of really working with the whole school community. So how can we learn from, here we have someone in-house who's able to bring in interns. There's a full disclosure, I work at Lifelong. So there's an often, you know, this request for LCSW supervision. But, you know, there's a model there that is kind of a whole school model. And how can we learn from that for Willard and for King? So I'm kind of curious to how that, how that will roll out. But my question, I think my big question really is around, when it comes to sustainability, is the role of the private insurers in our community? And Kaiser is probably the biggest insurer of our families in Berkeley. And if we've thought at all, or if you guys have thought at all about bringing Kaiser to the table of the task force as a partner, so that we can be really intelligent about our resources and leverage our resources for the underrepresented, under-resourced families and have our insurers really step up in the strategy that reaches the broader. So i- in addition to kind of liaising with our insurers, might be worthwhile actually inviting them to sit on a committee to be part of the planning. And just wondering whether or not that's come up or whether you've explored that.
Well, well, one of the, one of the, one of the things that we've had discussions on as we've gone through the steering committee planning is to create something that's sustainable, that isn't, that can live beyond the four years of the grant. And so a lot of our discussions are centered around those things. Well, as we're in the planning phase now, we're certainly opening, open to looking at all avenues, because ultimately, at the end of the day, we want something that's going to support our students in our community. And we know that to be able to do that, we're going to have to work with our community partners to be able to do that.
I mean, I would add, I think that that's a, a very interesting concept. But I think, you know, we all want to be careful how big of a bear we actually want to wrestle. And I think typically Kaiser, typically Kaiser patients or people who have Kaiser insurance are pretty well-resourced families. And so what we're really trying to do is support the Medi-Cal population. That's what the city of Berkeley focuses on. And those, that's typically where a lot of the black and brown and other clients who are not having access to services reside. And so our focus is, is on serving that community directly through mental health care and then also providing the navigation support for those that might have private insurance and don't know how to access care on their end. Our hope is that in terms of sustainability, you know, just to answer your question and talk about that, is to really trying to figure out and implement a plan that works, that has, that is driven by data and is culturally responsive and getting feedback from those that have participated in the program. And then hopefully the district and the city of Berkeley could see the benefit of that program and then find money to continue those types of programs or to continue the positions that have been hired on through the grant process. So that's probably more realistic of what we're trying to do. But I do think, you know, there could be an opportunity to engage large insurers, but I, I don't know that the MHSSA grant would be that opportunity.
So, so what I'm, I, I don't think it, it's the structure that the grant provides. It's not the grant itself. And I think what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that the grant should really focus on the populations you're talking about. It is a decreasing population in our district. And when you look at demands and needs, a lot of the demands and needs are people who are insured, who then take up the resources of the city and the school district, even though they have access, not, not maliciously, but they don't access the resources they actually have access to. So that's more like there, there might be ways to leverage those resources more than just a referral, but actually getting Kaiser to play, to help them, to get them to continue to help fund some of the things that are happening in the schools, when you look at what the percentage of patients. So I'm just, I think there's an opportunity not to silo. You know, we're doing these services for these kids. And because what happens is a lot of the kids who need support start drawing on that, on the demand of the, there's only so much humans can do in the schools, right? So I, I don't think I'm articulating it clearly enough. I don't know if other people are getting what I'm saying. But it's so that we can really devote the resources that we have to the kids who need it, is how can we leverage the bigger partners to make sure that, that the resources are available? You know, so I think there's an opportunity there that we often miss. When we hone in on direct service to a particular population, when the mental health needs of the school are universal, that we might be able to get funding from these other partners. that we might be able to get funding from these other partners for those bigger, universal supports. So I'll stop there. We could do offline conversations to strategize.
Vice President Babbitt.
Uh thank you, Director Sinai. Uh she actually is exactly right because um when your child is on campus, that's services that are being provided maybe during PE or doing some kind of elective. That's very different than having to take your child out of school to an appointment at Kaiser, for example. Um and that's typically what's happening in a lot of our schools, especially uh when we have people like Ms. Rosina, who has really orchestrated a very dynamic um intern program specifically at uh Longfellow Middle School for years. So uh please take that recommendation um as serious as uh as her heart and my heart convey it. It is definitely needed. Um I also want to say that um I I was very surprised that uh Ms. Rosina's name was missing from the c- from the committee as well as um Babaloa, because those are people who have been real beacons around uh mental health in our community long term. Um I want to make sure that some of our twenty twenty vision partners are included in this work who who really do support uh more mental health support services and all of these wraparound services. You know, and even as you um mentioned, um streamlining or creating ways in which people can navigate easier. Um usually at registration at a lot of schools, the mental health services table or people are are right there. So as a parent, you can meet them, you can sign your child up right then and there. And um I've been encouraging families to sign their children up uh even if you don't see signs, because we don't actually really, you know, we could get ahead of some stuff. And really, when we focus on these um mental health barriers, it does clear the way for uh for learning. And so uh that's one way that if we could implement that kind of system-wide, where the people are there on the ground. I'm not sure if that happens at every school. I just know that it happens at the schools that my children have attended. And I think that's a great um meet and greet opportunity to get kids automatically enrolled. I also heard you mention um using OFI, which I strongly support, but I also want to say that um a lot of that wraparound services is also social work. Um and so how can we make sure that if there's a way in this that we can leverage some, getting real social workers on our campus, because those people are real experts at many of the wraparound services that are needed, which indirectly and directly impact um mental health support. Um so I would definitely hope that this may be an avenue where we could kind of open that door with our city, with the county, to figure out how we can um offer that. There's a lot of other school districts have full-time social workers, at least that come on around once or twice a month, you know? Um yeah, actually, in San Francisco, they had one at every school. It was, I was blown away by that. So um the last thing I wanted to say is also about the PBIS. Um and um many years ago with LCAP Plan, not only did we, we funded a whole study for the mental health services to really be, you know, it it came with a full report with recommendations. And so again, I might be sounding like Director Sinai, please don't start over with a new, like the report was already there and paid for thoroughly researched what we have happening in BUSD and how do we uh systematize that, right? Um and that was under uh Pat Sadler. So I don't know how we find that. I I probably have a copy of that report if you need it, but we really need to um to not start over if we don't have to, but to leverage as much as possible. Lastly, our emotional toolbox. Um that was kind of a positive behavioral support, which gave everyone common language around how we interact with each other, right? And it was really, while it may not have been, we had hopes and dreams of making it more culturally um competent for for various communities, and that never happened. But I do, I know for a fact, the students who had that common language, it helped with interactions. It helped with school-community climate. And so I don't want to also shy away from um those kinds of soft behavioral supports, which lead to uh school climate. And I don't want to exclude that mental health services leads to positive school climates, right? My last comment is around uh making sure that um we include and don't shy away from the fact that unfortunately, we have, you know, students who have been exhibiting terrorist-type behaviors. We have students who are um exhibiting racist behaviors in some of the communications that have had to go out with uh KKK signs uh in bathrooms and other kinds of, you know, really targeted hate crime work happening with our students in our community. And so that needs to be a targeted focus of how we can identify that and root that out and also help people through that kind of conditioning. Because that, you know, that comes from conditioning. That comes from people teaching them to believe these things. And so there are very strong organizations and people who have come out of organizations, like the Proud Boys, for example, or other uh KKK examples, through mental health services, through people reaching out to them, through rehabilitation. And so we need to first make sure that we acknowledge that we have this racist climate and that we include that in how we root it out and address um the needs of our mental health supports. So I don't know, I don't think I had any questions, but I just wanted to to give you that feedback and um also thank you for this this presentation. You could tell we've been waiting for it. And I'm actually very um impressed that so many things are happening and so many things are systematized in a way that we could actually measure the progress, measure the student activities. So kudos to you all. Thank you.
And I think those are all of the questions and or comments um from the Board of Education. I don't know, Mr. Maddox or Dr. Shelley, if you wanted the opportunity uh to respond to Vice President Babbitt before we close this, this discussion item.
I just want to say thank you for her comments. I think, you know, she's one hundred percent right. Um we definitely need to collaborate on, you know, what are some best practices to address the the needs and some of the AOs that she described. And I'm very open to sort of as I continue to build my relationship with the school district, um you know, I see how we could partner together to identify and address some of those topics. Uh I'm a willing partner. Like I said, I've been here almost three years um with the high school in Berkeley, and I'm just very committed to the community. So um look forward to our partnership moving forward. So thank you.
Well, thank you for saying that, Mr. Maddox. We look forward to our continued partnership and appreciate both you and Dr. Shelley's commitment um to our schools and to the social, emotional and mental health well-being of all of our students here in BUSD. So thank you both for this presentation, and we look forward to uh, of course, connecting with you offline, but also working diligently so that we can do the things that were mentioned this evening. Okay? Thank you so much. All right, we will now move to our action, our only action item um of the evening. And many of you know uh that for a while now, the Board of Education um has been talking about um a selection model for middle school assignments and actually starting in the spring of twenty twenty one. Our staff began a multi-phase community engagement process to understand uh different viewpoints from the community members about three different student assignment options, which include number one, not to make any changements to the current enrollment process. Number two, create three middle school attendance zones. Or number three, design an elementary-middle school feeder model. And so uh there's been a lot of community feedback, a lot of uh info sessions. And so uh based on the and the analysis of the models presented tonight, the staff has a recommendation uh for the Board of Education that we will hear at this evening. And so I'm excited to welcome Superintendent Stevens um as well as um Francisco Martinez uh tonight for this presentation. So welcome to you both.
Thank you very much, President Brown, and uh welcome to Mr. Francisco Martinez, who is the manager of our, manager of our admissions office um and who has with a number of other staff members uh invested a remarkable number of hours over about an eighteen-month period to engage our community, our staff and many other stakeholders uh in discussions about a potential revision to our middle school student assignment policy. Uh we'd like to take a few minutes um just to sort of walk through that engagement work uh to share with you the results of some of the sort of most recent surveys that we've conducted. Um we'd also like to uh sort of unpack uh the various policy models that we've been looking at. Uh I know that board members will be very familiar with this information. We do this largely for the benefit of the public, uh but also to make sure as we enter into this decision um that that we all have, share a common set of sort of information and facts about the potential policy revision. So with that, I'm going to share my screen uh and we will uh jump right in. I pressed the wrong button. Here we go. Um so so again, the 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 um action item for this evening is um to request that the board uh make a decision about sort of a a policy item that contains two components. Um first, the selection of a particular policy replacement um for our current model. Um staff has a very particular recommendation this evening. Um and then a second um aspect of this decision is um either to select that model as the sort of final decision uh or to select the model as what we've been calling a finalist decision. Um in the sort of uh event that the board were to select a finalist, then we would anticipate it coming back to the board potentially um in the fall um to complete that decision and essentially sort of select the model for good. Uh staff comes this evening with a very particular recommendation. Uh and that is that the Board of Education adopt the three-zone model um as a finalist with a second vote in November of twenty-two to select the final model. Um you'll notice that again, there are two components to this. One is the model itself, and the second is whether or not we're sort of acting this evening uh to make that decision final. Uh we came up with the notion of a finalist model about a year ago, um when at that point, the board last sort of encountered this decision. Um and to sort of uh sort of design a decision-making process that would have multiple parts, uh mainly as a way to make sure that our community were um was well-informed about the direction that the board is taking. Um yeah, we're also, uh just to sort of additional caveats to this, um the implementation of whatever decision is um uh adopted by the board this evening would take effect in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh and that we must adjust our admissions process no later than November of twenty-two um so that this policy could be implemented for um for that twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh we would anticipate during the year in between this decision and the enactment of that policy, that staff have a variety of preparations to complete, uh including finalizing models, um doing very specific uh address-related runs, uh communicating with families and prepping any new procedures related to the enactment of this policy. Um why don't we provide a little bit of background information about our community engagement process as well as the rationale for this decision? And I'm sort of having terrible trouble with my screen. Francisco, I think you're going to take over from this point. Is that right?
The um the next one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um so just as a reminder, we have been engaged in a multiple-phase community engagement process. We began this work back in the spring of twenty-one, and what we described as phase one, uh that consisted of a number of community outreach meetings to describe the intent of the policy revision and particularly um to lay the philosophical groundwork as it relates to desegregation and diversity uh that then informed later phases of our engagement. In the fall, we uh initiated a second phase that featured town halls, focus groups and surveys. This spring, we've done sort of a truncated version of that same work with town halls and another survey. And again, in our particular sort of staff recommendation, we would envision a decision taking place in November of of twenty-two. Uh and then Francisco, if I'm now right, I think it's on to you. Is that right?
Yes.
Great.
Um so so Berkeley has a very rich um commitment to diversity that began in nineteen sixty-eight when it voluntarily um decided to integrate um the schools. Um and this commitment to diversity is um in integration in our schools is a core district value. Next, please. Um diversity enriches the educational experiences of our students. It enhances the educational occupational aspirations, enhances critical thinking, facilitates and equitable distribution of resources, reduces, prevents or eliminates the effects of racial isolation, encourages positive relationships across racial economic lines by breaking the cycle of racial hostility to foster a community of tolerance and appreciation of students from it but um from different backgrounds and promotes um participation in pleuristic society. This uh comes from the um when we did the student assignment plan for the mid- middle schools in two thousand and four. This is what um the our committee came up with as and as a way to define and to create a student assignment policy for the the elementary schools. Next, please. Um, uh students, um like we said, student diversity and student integration is a core community value. Right now, our middle schools, the three middle schools, King, Longfellow and Willard, they're not integrated. They do not reflect the socioeconomic diversity um in a um that exists in our community. And all three middle schools are impacted by this phenomenon. And the trend is expected to continue if the current enrollment practices are not changed. Um so we're gonna present um the um what the student population looks at our three middle schools. So this is three years of data um that we aggregated to look at our student population by a race in the ethnicity to see what do the stool, the students that attend our schools look like. And as you can see, um the really rough one from here is that our schools are not diverse. If you look at the left side, um the bar that represents King, fifty percent of the students that attend King are white, whereas only ninety percent are Longfellow and forty-six percent at um at Willard. Um so so um so this, there's discrepancies and disparities with within, just by looking at race and ethnicity, our three middle schools. Next, please. Um this um is another way of looking at our student population of the three middle schools. And this is the percentage of unduplicated students from two thousand and fourteen to now twenty twenty-two. And we wanted to look what it does, this, the population looks like for unduplicated students. So unduplicated students are students that qualify for free and reduced lunch. They're English learners or are students who are experienced in homelessness or are students that are foster youth. So what we can see in here, like in two thousand and four, there was less disparity. Um but as it stands right now in twenty twenty-two, uh but close to about sixty-five percent of our students um that attend Longfellow are students um that are unduplicated students. So it's a very large percentage in comparison to both King and Willard that are about twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent of their student population. Next, please. Um in here, we're looking at um at what we call diversity categories. Diversity categories is what we use to assign our students at the elementary schools. And we're using this um to look at what um using the diversity categories for the elementary schools, what do the students that attend um our middle schools look like? Again, this is um three years of data that we wanted to see what do the students look like uh that are attending our schools. On the left-hand side again is King. Um so roughly, diversity category one is um west, is West Berkeley. Diversity category two is like the middle. And diversity category three is um the Berkeley Hills. So in this, and they're represented by colors. The and in this case, diversity category one is represented by yellow. Um diversity category two is a purple and diversity category three is blue. And here we're looking at um so just briefly, King, um the students that attend King um middle school in this three years of aggregated aggregated data, thirty-seven percent come from diversity category um one, whereas for Longfellow, diversity category um one, which is again, West Berkeley is seventy-one percent. And for Willard is um is forty-two percent. And then look at it, looking at the other way at diversity category three, which is the Berkeley Hills, thirty-eight percent of the students that attend King, they come from the hills, eight percent for Longfellow and twenty for Willard. Thirty-eight percent of the students that attend King, they come from the hills, eight percent for Longfellow and twenty for Willard. Next please. So we get to, to the question, so what, what do we do? What are the alternatives? What can we consider to? To make some changes in our policy? So the, the options are that we consider and for over. I know that we have been looking for the board like, for, like since eighteen, like close to two years, but we have been looking at this for many, like. Director Ty Alper, like now that we have been working on this since like 2017, when, when we began looking at it. So there are three options. One is to do nothing. Just keep the, keep the current system and not do anything. Another option was to grade three attendance zones. And the, and the third option is to grade feeder schools. This is where elementary, a number of elementary school students that those schools would fit into our middle school model on the structure. And then we're gonna go and show a little bit some of the maps to see what they would look like. Next please. But, um, but before it starts, so this is a map of, of Berkeley. And, and then here, that rectangular area on the right-hand side, that's Cal. So just, and on the left-hand side, it would be I-80. And then, and then, so you, so you get to see where we are. This just depicts what the two attendance hours are for the middle schools right now. And this is if we did anything and everything remained the same. So the orange color does the King attendance zone. And the green is the Willer attendance zone. And Longfellow does not have an attendance on. Longfellow is a district-wide choice school. Because in nineteen ninety-five, when it was, Longfellow was designated as a middle school, it, it, no attendance was created for them. So this map has been in fact, in effect since nineteen ninety-four, and they had many changes. There's a couple of white lines that run from kind of the flats up to the hills. Those are the elementary school attendance zones. So, and as you can see, all of King isn't the north, um, the north sun for the elementary school fills into King. And the south sun is the two. Willer and in the middle is gonna split between King and Willer. Next please. Um, this is the, the map that we call the diversity category map for the elementary schools. I just, I need to say that this map is a little bit old. But we are in the process of updating the map because we had the data from the 2020 census has been released. It was released recently. And we are working on that with that data to try to grade a new map that would be more current and for, for Berkeley. So, so this is, um, the diversity category, just briefly. One of the things that I mentioned before is that, so this is the map of Berkeley. And diversity category one in here is for, is in West Berkeley. Diversity category two is a purple, isn't kind of central. And diversity category three is the Berkeley Hill. So when we assign students. For our elementary schools is we're mixing the kids proportionally from the three colors to make sure that the schools are diverse and that they're integrated. Using the social, the, the, the socioeconomic factors that we get from the census and then a historical race ethnicity from, from, from Berkeley. Next please. In the next map, what we're gonna see is the. In the next map, what we're gonna see is the. A proposed three-zone map. And this is so that if we were to grade. Three attendant zones for the three middle schools, one for King, one for Willard and one for Longfellow. This is a proposal, I mean a draft map. So in here, what we're, we're seeing is that. That will be reducing because we're creating a new, and so in mid Berkeley is that the, the attendance zone for King would be somewhat reduced. And so would the attendance on for Willard. There is a white line in the middle and that lined depicts what the present attendance zones for King and Willer are. So as you can see, the, the green, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the green takes part of the King's son and part of the. Other with our son. And in this, what we were trying to do to me is to make sure that the student population in a proposed map. And the proposed outcome that the student populations at the three middle schools would be diverse and that would be integrated using this map. One of the things that we have done in here, because. We would, we assume that long, the Sylvia Mendez, the students that are in Sylvia Mendez in the two-way immersion program, they would feed into Longfellow, they would continue to feed. So what we have done is to look where the students live. So if you look at this map, there's in both. And in both King and Willard, and there is a little bit of a shaded area. And that tells us where some of the kids that are attending right now, the fourth grade. That are attending Sylvia Mendez lives. So. So we, we created that so that we can see where, where they live. So, so the kids, as you can see for Sylvia Mendez, they come from throughout Berkeley. They're small numbers. They're in under this, we have nineteen students that come from the, the King's son, the proposed King's son. And they were fifteen, they were coming from the Willerson and twelve from the proposed. Longfellow son. So this is a proposed map for a three-zone middle school on plan. So like now we, in the next map, we're gonna see what the student population looks like if I'm following this proposed. Map. So in here, we have the three middle schools and we have the current diversity categories for the, for the schools. And the new diversity categories using the map, you know, like creating an attendance zone for the three middle schools, what did they look like? So, so I'm gonna read one for King. Diversity category one. And right now is, is thirty-seven percent. And they're using and they attend the three-zone map, it would be forty-four percent. And that diversity category two, right now is twenty-five, would be twenty-seven. And for diversity category three, right now thirty-eight and it would be twenty-eight percent. So if you, if you look, just looking at the three diversity categories, if you look at the new diversity category one. On the left-hand side for the three middle schools, you can see that they vary from forty-one to forty-eight percent. For diversity category two, from twenty-seven to thirty. And at the end, that proposed diversity category for the. For the three, it ranges from twenty-five to thirty. So it's pretty well balanced according to the diversity categories. Using the current, the current map that we have for, for the, for the schools. Next please. So now we're gonna talk about the feeder schools. And. So in, in this map, we have, this is. Under a proposed feeder school model where the schools that we assigned to King is Rosa Parks, Berkeley Arts Magnet, Ruth Act and Thousand Oaks. So again, as you can see in the middle, you'll see a blue line and that depicts the present attendance on for King and Willard. And we wanted to see where do the kids come from under this model, you know, like where do they live and. For King. So you can see that, that students under this, and they, they primarily live right now in the King's son. There's a few of them that live in the Willerson, but the vast majority of them live in the King's zone. And that's because in this case, Berkeley Arts Magnet is a central son school. And so some of the students would be coming from the central son into King. But it aligns pretty much with what we currently have in the attendance on for King. So, so this looks somewhat, you know, good because we're grouping those students there. So if we look at the next map. The next map is for, for Longfellow. Longfellow, we, we needed to be careful as to like the, the schools that we assigned to them because it's the smallest middle school and we wanted to make sure that, that it would fit. The students and, and not just next year, but, but in the future. So one, some of the students that we assigned, we began with Sylvia Mendez because Sylvia Mendez would have to be a feeder school into Longfellow. Regardless of any, if, of anything, because that's where the program is for those students. And another, another school that we assigned to them was Malcolm X and then Oxford. One of the things that we see is because Oxford and, and Malcolm X are both central son schools. Is that students and Malcolm X is also a south son school. Is that the students would be coming from the center, what is now the central zone for the elementary schools and, and. And South Berkeley where, and Southeast Berkeley as well, because that's where the, the students also come from, from Malcolm X. We, we looked, once we mapped the kids from Longfellow, we saw that some of the students that, that are coming from. North, east, and Berkeley, and some of them are students that, that are attending right now. Sylvia Mendez, as two-way merchant students. So, so, so again, one of the concerns that we, we acknowledge is that they are, there's benefits. For students to continue from an elementary to middle school, it creates and they're disenthores, the concern of transportation that, that would need to be addressed. Next please. In here, we have the students that would be assigned to Willard. In this case, we, you know, we had to select Emerson and John Muir because those are the students, the schools that are in that, in that area. And then we looked at the other students, the others, or the other schools that were left is Craigman and Washington. Both of the schools, both of those schools are centers on schools. So, um, again, just like a Longfellow, because of that, it, the students would be coming from. From a far distance because they live in the central zone and in our elementary schools. In order to integrate the schools, we, and, and we have an attendance zone, we need to make sure that the, the schools. They come from, from the hills and the flats and the, and the middle to make sure that the schools are diverse. So this is the, the result of that. That it depicts where the students live because of our elementary student assignment plan. Next please. Um, so in here, you know, that we looked at what, under a feeder model, what the diversity categories look like. So again, we saw in the beginning that there was discrepancy and the current using the diversity categories. Of the students that are attending with this discrepancy. However, if I'm under a model of diversity. And using the feeder model, we see that the schools under diversity category one on the left-hand side. They range from forty-one to forty-six and diversity categories twenty-seven to thirty. And, and diversity category three is twenty, twenty-seven to twenty-nine. Again, this is, and this is a reflex. That because our elementary, our elementary schools are already diverse, once you assign them to middle school, it reflects, it reflects that. That, that the schools will also be diverse using, as a, when we use as an outcome, the diversity categories. For, that we use right now for the elementary schools. So I think Superintendent, I think you're next.
Thank you so much, Francisco. Really appreciate that. As part of our community engagement process over the course of the last year, we heard a number of additional themes surfacing from both the, both families and from staff. Two of those themes were predominantly centered on the sort of possibility of increasing programming across all of our middle schools. As part of this policy decision. We also heard calls for an exploration of increased middle school transportation. So we want to look a little bit at sort of information that we shared with our community and feedback we got back. So as part of our town halls, we shared with folks that in order to expand Omoja and Puente to affinity-based programs that like this point exists only at Longfellow. That we'd be looking at the following costs per year. We also shared with our community this cost estimate. About the additional sort of expense that the district would incur in order to add one bus. To our, to, to our current transportation routes. We don't currently serve middle schools. And then we asked our, our community to give us feedback on the relative value of these expenses versus other investments. That the district might make over the coming years. When we sent out a, a survey to our community, we received a total of seven hundred and fifteen responses. And we were asking about two key questions. One had to do with the preference for student assignment model. And then preferences for expanded spending at the middle school level. So we'll take a quick glance at that feedback and we'll move relatively quickly through it. This is a representation of the, of the responses we received back of the seven hundred and fifteen, who was represented among them. By far, the majority of our respondents were caregivers or parents. You can see the distribution of the respondents across grade levels. The majority of respondents came from the elementary school level. That makes sense given who would be impacted by this policy decision. You can see the distribution of respondents by demographic group. This is relatively consistent with other survey-based feedback and we did over the course of this eighteen-month period, conduct a whole variety of focus groups. And far more targeted feedback collection, which we've shared in past presentations. You can see these are representing questions about. Families with students with special education services as well as families with English learners. And then here is the, you know, sort of less than definitive results of our sort of first question. And that had to do with caregiver preferences for one of these three models. You can see that by just a slight margin, families prefer the three-zone model. But it's really sort of so close for this particular sample. It'd be difficult to say that there's one model preferred to another. So red in this particular pie chart represents the three-zone model. That sort of yellow color represents the feeder model. And the folks respond, the blue represents those families indicating that they prefer, that there be no change. You can see as well that when we asked the question about. That sort of value of including transportation at the middle school level, that it was only slightly above fifty percent. So that they would prefer it versus about forty-seven percent who said no to that question. And we tried to phrase the question that, you know, do you prefer to spend on middle school transportation over other district priorities? Trying to make clear that this is a zero-sum game. We don't have unlimited funds and that if we spend in this area, it would necessarily mean not spending in others. You can see as well, when we asked the question about being supportive of spending district money on additional affinity-based programs across all three of the middle schools, the response was much more favorable. With three quarters of our respondents indicating that they would support additional spending for programs like Omoja and Puente in all three of our middle schools. In this particular survey, then we asked sort of the overall feelings about the staff recommendation to move to a three-zone model. You can see that when we combine strongly agree and agree. That we do achieve results over fifty percent with another fourteen percent sort of being neutral. And it's a total of about thirty-three, thirty-four percent to disagree with the staff recommendations. Given what we imagine to be, you know, a potentially very controversial decision, these results aren't bad. But as has been the case over the eighteen-month period that we've been deeply engaged with our community, we have not seen a single model. Emerge with anything more than sort of slightly above sort of fifty percent support. So again, just to return to where we started at the, at the top of this presentation, that our current staff recommendation is that the board adopt the three-zone model. We're proposing that we would sort of take this decision in two stages, that this evening, the board would adopt a finalist model. And then some, sometime in the fall, perhaps in November, that the board would return to select a final model. We do understand that there are members of the community, including folks in the Longfellow community, who would urge the board to make a final decision this evening. For the purpose of settling this policy discussion, allowing more clean sort of planning platform for next year. And to sort of prevent what might be sort of confusion among members of the community about what we're doing. So we recognize that the board will have a discussion about both elements of this decision. Both about the three-zone model as being the staff sort of recommendation. We'll take that question first. And then whether or not this evening's decision should be on a finalist model, meaning it would come back in November or whether this would be the final decision. Mean, meaning that this would be the way forward. Again, just to review some of the details for folks watching along, this is a policy decision that would take effect for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That our admissions process must be adjusted no later than December of twenty-two. And that this coming year, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year would be used for a whole variety of preparations by staff. As well as communication with elementary families who are going through the enrollment process. So thank you very much to our entire community. We really appreciate the robust participation in this. About eighteen months of engagement work on this policy question. It's been an important one for our community and we look forward to the the coming discussion and board action this evening.
Thanks to both Superintendent Stevens and to you, Francisco, for this presentation this evening. We'll begin with questions from the Board of Ed. Are there any questions? Vice President Babbitt?
Yes, thank you so much. I have a question about the the maps in general. Are they based on the latest census data? Or do we still are we still expecting to get more census data that we can update them on?
Again, there will be, the data is available and we are downloading it. Unfortunately, you know, it's not about we're not ready. Or there was some. It it takes a longer time than than we went down to anticipated. It would just became available recently, so we are working on that. So there will be additional data coming maps for you.
So when the when the if we approve this now, are we saying that these maps are set in stone? Or can we also give ourselves room to look at updated maps? Because, you know, there are some people who are actually going to be impacted more by transportation and others based on current maps. And so that's why I would like to give us room to approve a model yet. Not be stuck if we can have better outcomes based on new maps.
Francisco, you're welcome to join me in this response, but I imagine that you would answer in this way. And that is that we would refresh these maps once we've built the new data into these models. So so we're asking for is action on the model itself, Vice President Babbitt. And that we would build it in with the most recent census data, which would then impact the the sort of margins of each of those those lines.
Okay, and what what info is it again that you need on the map? It's just.
We are, we are downloading the the census data about parent education and parent income.
Director Simon.
Yeah, following, were you done, Vice President Babbitt?
Yes, thank you.
Following on on that. First, thank you for the presentation and. Mr. Martinez, you've been working on this for years, so I appreciate all of the the hours and hours and hours and years and years and years over the course of your career that you've been working on this stuff. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I think the other aspect of the census data is the diversity is the race and ethnicity. Because I think what when we look at the new census data, the updated census data. It might impact depending on how you draw the lines, it might impact the diversity index. So I assume that you're also going to be downloading ethnicity or no?
Ethnicity, when the board policy was created for the nineteen in two thousand and four, the board wanted us to include some. Racial diversity from the district, not from the sense, you know, they wanted something in there.
So the student is based on the actual students, not on demographics of the city.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right. So along the lines of what Vice President Babbitt, I mean, I'm I'm also. Contingent, you know, on how the new census data, you know, changes. So I'm not as interested in approving a particular map. But looking at how it might evolve and how it might change based on the data. I could you pull up, I have one comment and then a question. Could you pull up the existing? Middle school zone map, I think it's that one.
Let me see if I can share my screen.
Here, yeah, so I want to make a comment to a lot of the community members that have been emailing us. I've been hearing some very serious and passionate concerns. About transportation issues or the vicinity that people have to their schools largely coming from the hills. And the vicinity and how close people's homes are to King. And the ability to get to school with, you know, less than a mile. And I just want to point out to people that the way the current zone works. We've got students coming from all the way in southwest Berkeley. Who have a significant trek to get to King now. And no matter, you know, what scenario we pick. There is going to be a trek to for some community to get to the school. So I just, I want to show that regardless of the map. We have to balance the transportation issue and it's not just hill parents to King. But it's south and west Berkeley families who actually have less access to transportation in many ways to the school. So again, you know, I think that we need to look at, and I know Director Vasudev will probably bring this up. But is whether we're paying for transportation out of our own budget or we're partnering with AC Transit. We've got to figure out a way to make sure that our students have access to middle school, regardless of where they live. In a timeframe that doesn't put them on a bus for an hour. I mean, my my daughter went to Longfellow, we live in North Berkeley. If I had put her on a city bus, it would have taken her over an hour to get to Longfellow. That would not be an option. So we've got to figure out a way to address the transportation issues. So that's my one, you know, caveat and regardless of what plan we do, transportation is an issue for some populations. My question is, I'd like Superintendent Stevens to talk a lot, you know, in the past I've asked about research. On best practices or, you know, any kind of research that might demonstrate. The educational outcomes or social emotional well being of a feeder pattern. Where students and families are traveling together from their elementary to their middle school versus a traditional pattern. And Dr. Stevens, I know that you've done a little bit of research. And we've talked a little bit about it, but I'd like it if you could maybe share some of your summary findings. Because that definitely is helping my thinking. Based on what I, you know, anecdotally assume versus based on what some of the research tells us.
I appreciate the question, Director Sonai. Yeah, we did sort of jump in to see what research exists on the question of sort of student outcomes in in various matriculation patterns. What we were able to find is about a dozen articles that that sort of looked empirically at the question. And there was one good meta analysis performed by the Hanover Research Group that kind of rolled up a whole bunch of research on this question. The conclusion at the end of the day is that there was no discernible difference. Based on the matriculation pattern of a particular district. So really, it didn't matter whether there was a feeder pattern or not. What they did find generally is that that transition programs do make a difference in academic outcomes for kids. And that had nothing to do with the matriculation policy. It had to do with students being introduced. To a school community and supported to integrate into their school community at the points that they transitioned from elementary to middle or middle to high school. So that's sort of a different question than the one we've been considering. But but it was good to look at the research. It did turned out that there was really no discernible difference on based on district policy.
Yeah, and I really appreciated that. And I appreciate the fact that it's really the welcoming school environment. And it's that transition program that whether it's a feeder or not a feeder, that's 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 the part that makes a big difference. So because of that. I don't have a strong opinion about, I kind of represent the pie chart. It's like, you know, I think there's value to the feeder program. I think the three zone model could work if we deal with some of the issues, particularly around transportation. But the one thing I'm firm about is we need to deal with a new assignment policy. So I feel like it's a little bit semantic on whether it's a finalist or a final decision. Because I think if we decide to move forward on this, we're making a decision. That we want to change the assignment policy that so that our schools are balanced, all three middle schools are balanced. And I want to give, and again, I don't know, Vice President Babbitt, this is kind of what you're thinking too. It's like, I don't want to constrain our planning. Based on a map, I want to make sure that the staff have the flexibility to develop a model. That works well and that we can address the the transportation issues appropriately. So, you know, if that's called the three zone model. You know, I'm I'm okay with that, but those are the those are the factors that that I was taking into consideration. So I appreciate, I appreciate that added information from the research. Thanks.
If I make one point, I met last week, I believe, or the week before last with AC Transit with three managers. And Director Sonai, the very point that you said about that, I said, like, having this student driving from one and up. From one place to get to school and if they're spending one hour, it was unacceptable to us. Also, the students, you know, changing buses was not acceptable to us, you know, like I was saying, like we have ten and eleven year old kids. That would be changing buses in downtown Berkeley. It wasn't, you know, we needed to come up with something. My point is that we have begun the discussion with them to to come up with whatever happens. To maybe have, you know, come up with some resources for our families because we understand that the district is doesn't have all the all the money. If we had all the money, I mean, there would not be an issue, but we need to see like what can the district do? And what can AC Transit do to help us facilitate transportation for our kids, given their budget and our budget? So so we have begun the discussion.
Director Vasudev.
Great, thank you so much, Francisco. I'm gonna piggyback on some of the questions that Director Sonai brought up. For me, it's with one small disagreement. It's not just an issue of semantics. Because I think that we've heard time, like I've gone to the smaller discussions with our English language learners and our Latinx families and our families of color. And time and time again, it's in those discussions that the transportation issue becomes even more apparent. And we know as educators, right, that the lack of reliable transportation is a primary factor in chronic absenteeism. So it's not like a minor thing between approving a finalist and a final model. Because for me, I would love to see that analysis before we approve a final model. And so I have a couple of questions that I've asked them before and I and I'm pleased to hear that Mr. Francisco has met with AC Transit. My questions are, do we know if the student transit pass program that provides free transportation, free Clipper cards to our youth? Will be available to all of the students in all three middle schools? The very specific question is a program that started that it's easy transit has a planner. I think I put that planner in touch with the district before. So what's the status of the student transit pass program serving all our middle schools? And the second question is, you know, if we have met with AC Transit. When will we have the analysis on how our students from the different neighborhoods? Especially if we're looking at the three zone model. Will be served by the existing transit lines and what kind of changes need to happen? Because I know in other jurisdictions, you know, transit agencies can create rapid lines to help students. Avoid that situation where you have to transfer the different buses and that stuff takes time. And so, you know, it's a it's a long time to be able to plan that out. And so I'd love to know if we're if we're just starting the discussion, when will that analysis be done? Did the transit agency give us an idea of when that analysis will be done? Because I think that's really important and particularly, you know, in the survey, when I see that our black and brown families are really slow percentage of responses back. But I know qualitatively that, you know, in those sessions when we've had those small group discussions, this has been a primary concern for those families. To decide without having those answers to me just doesn't feel right. So I'd love to hear more details about what we found out from our first conversation with AC Transit. Thanks.
I didn't ask those questions and but that's something that we can ask them. But I just wanted to point out that under our present. We didn't mention it, but we there is right now funds for a one bus that under for. The the that we that is a bus that is with our existing without existing services right now. So we have and there we talked about before about maybe having an express bus if there were to be a three zone map. Some that that would be coming and serving some some of the students. So we know that we didn't mention that, but that is something that we do have for for that three zone, maybe like one bus.
And that's our our yellow bus, right? Is that what you're talking about, Francisco, our yellow bus? But the transit agency hasn't committed to a rapid line for us, yeah. So and I would also encourage us to talk to the the city's transportation staff, right? Because the city doesn't want us to, you know, an assignment system that's going to cause further congestion in the city. And so I would invite them to the table as well.
I did talk to them about could they commit to a express bus for our middle schools and they said no. That they couldn't do it, that they would have to serve, you know, like the the stops that are in there. In the in the system right now, that they couldn't commit to that. I did ask that.
Director Albers, your hand up. I didn't want to skip you.
Well, you can go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the question.
I'll go after you.
And and this is more so. Not necessarily about the models, but about the affinity based programs for students. I just want to call out, I think my feeling about this has been shared a couple of months ago. And I just want to make sure that I have the opportunity to highlight how important it is. That with these changes, we do have spaces for our students to feel supported and culturally supported. I think it's no secret that this model, whatever final finalists model we decide tonight. The cultural impacts to our schools specifically Longfellow will be very different. And so I appreciate, you know, knowing that Quente and that Omoja is being considered to to be expanded at other school sites. But I definitely think that there has to be something more that's done to support. The the cultural change that will happen at Longfellow. And I wanted to know if you've considered this more beyond what you've recommended tonight. With support for affinity groups. This does not impact, obviously, the finalist model or what we decide on tonight. But I do think that as we have this conversation, I know that many people in our community are having other conversations about how their school community will change because of this. And I think it's worth them knowing that this is something that we are also thinking about a hold in near to our heart and that we've. We are taking seriously their concerns.
I appreciate the question, President Brown. The the answer is is directly yes. There's been a number of contexts, for example, in in the context of discussing the developing African American success framework. Where we're talking about the expansion of the emoji class from Longfellow to Willard and King. We've also, as as part of our planning around the Pointe program already costed out.
I'm sorry, Superintendent Stevens, I don't mean to stop you. In my opening comments, I talked about, I'm already aware of what we're doing with Quintey and with Omoja, and I don't want you to have to repeat that.
Okay. Perfect. And can then help me know how to respond to to your either comment or question, President Brown?
I think what we're doing with the mojo and quintay will help our students who may potentially go to other school sites. But my question is how we have decided to help and support the Longfellow community? Knowing that this will be a cultural shift and change in their in that community.
Specific planning, I sort of can't speak to. I do know that the Longfellow staff, as well as its administration, has been very supportive of this change. There have been a whole variety of changes that have taken place on the Longfellow campus recently, including the seven period day and all of the additional access that that's created. I do think that 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 community in particular is eagerly awaiting a decision by the board. And I think will embrace, you know, should it be a decision to move towards the three zone model? We'll embrace the the sort of planning challenges that that entails.
Thank you for that. And I just want to. Throw my two cents in about transportation. I appreciate it, Director Vasudev, what you recommended and as far as, you know, the rapid line who could that could potentially serve some of our students. And the opportunity to collaborate with AC Transit as well. However, I do want to just urge my colleagues. To to not let just transportation be a barrier to our decision making tonight. Because, you know, the reality of it is that, although we want to serve our families, both in the hills. And, you know, in southwest Berkeley, the reality of it is we don't provide transportation to our middle schools at all. And for years, we've been, you know, kind of encouraging our families to do what they need to do to figure it out, to make sure that they get their young people to school. And I just want us to, I know that we all are aware of that, but I do want us to remember that in terms of when we get to the vote later on. And not use it as a barrier to make a decision about a finalist model. Director, Vice President, sorry, Vice President Babbitt. Director, Vice President, uh, uh, sorry, Vice President Babbitt.
I thought Director Alper was before me, but I think he put his hand down.
Well, he keeps playing the hand. It's up, it's down, it's up, it's down.
What other people have to say, I've been listening to myself, but go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say that we do need to pick this finalist model so that the staff can actually move forward, so that the community can begin to prepare and so that we can have meaningful discussions with our public transportation partners on, on how we're able to, you know, to at least let families know what's available to them. And I agree that we haven't provided transportation in the past. And I also agree that people have for years found ways to get their children to school and they will continue to find ways to get their children to school. And we do wanna offer our families the best. And I think if we could partner now with AC Transit around some of these models, we are fixing a problem that we probably could have, you know, helped to support before now. And so I'm open to, to that as well. No, it shouldn't be a barrier, but yes, that's why I also think making this decision now is definitely important. And I also wanna say around the maps again and what you're saying around supporting Longfellow, I think it's very important to really look at the new census data and, and to really hear how many people in the Longfellow community would kind of actually prefer to have more people who live closer within, within Longfellow's district to also have rights to attend Longfellow. It seems natural that that's gonna happen, but the way the current maps are is not a guarantee. So, thanks.
Director, Director Alper and then we'll look to you, Director Sinai.
Thanks, and I, well, I also just wanted to start by thinking, Mr. Martinez is, I think Director Stevens, or you mentioned, Francisco, you know, you've been working on this for at least four or five years, if not longer. So the outreach to the community has been over eighteen or twenty-one months. But I know you've been working on it for, for much longer than that. And, and, and for those, you know, I mean, I know we all in this, on this dais know this, but Mr. Martinez is one of the hardest jobs in the district. And, and I've really seen firsthand how much he values the district's goals of equity and inclusion. I've seen firsthand his willingness to put in incredibly long hours to see those goals, you know, actualized. And, and to work through this, what in most districts would be an incredibly fraught process of redoing an assignment plan. That's like the third rail in so many districts. And the fact that we have had, we've had some passionate commenters and emails and a lot of people have responded to the surveys. But the fact that, you know, very few people have expressed really strong disagreement, note, there was zero public comment on this topic tonight, I think is a testament to the research and the careful outreach he and district staff have conducted. So that even, even people who disagree with, with a move in this way, understand the rationale for it and they feel like they've had a chance to have their, their views expressed and considered and reflected. So I, I'm grateful, you know, to you, Mr. Martinez and certainly Dr. Stevens for ensuring that, you know, this initiative, it got delayed because of COVID, but it didn't get lost in the COVID shuffle altogether. And, and I really appreciate you keeping it on the front burner. It would have been easy to, to continue to put it off. I think Vice President Babbitt is exactly right, that, and, and in terms of the process. And I think all of you are, my personal opinion is that you're all right in terms of the critical issues that we have to look at. We're not, nobody's asking us to approve a specific map tonight. I think that's a staff thing that, that should be worked out with the most updated data that they have. And, and, and we don't wanna be sort of drawing lines at the board level, but we'd be approving the model. So I think that that's a totally fair point and, and people should know that the maps will still be in development. Transportation is critical. I'm really, I was really grateful to see that we're able to fund a middle school bus and driver with our existing budget. This may be something as Vice President Babbitt said, maybe we should have been doing this all along, but now's an opportunity. I mean, that one bus can cover a lot of ground, so I think that's great news. And then the early conversations with AC Transit are also great news. And I appreciate Director Vassadav pushing on that. We would have fifteen months if we decided tonight to, to work this out. And maybe Director Vassadav, you would tell us it takes five years, but hopefully we can do it in, in fifteen months. And, but, but, a, and then the programming things that President Brown and Director Sinai talked about and the need to make sure that, that kids at all three schools are well, feel welcome and included. But, but I, I really agree that all those are important things to work out and, and, and need to be worked out in the next fifteen months. But if we don't, if we don't make a decision tonight and pick the model, then we're just delaying, we're shortening the amount of time we have to make those decisions. So I really agree with what Vice President Babbitt said about, we need to make the decision tonight. We need to decide on the model and I really feel like we need, I know this is the second part of the discussion, but we just need to say this is what we're doing. And then direct staff over the next fifteen months to come to us with transportation questions, policy questions, program issues at the schools. And then we can discuss those and we could do it in a workshop format if, if that turns out to work well. But, but the, I'll stop in a second, but this all has to be like considered against the status quo, which is a broken system. It's a broken segregated system that doesn't reflect our values, isn't consistent with the way we do elementary school or high school assignment and needs to be fixed. And, and we have the opportunity to fix it. And I just really urge us to, to fix it tonight and then, and then do the hard work that needs to be done over the next fifteen months to figure out what needs to be done to implement it successfully for everybody, for all three schools. Thanks.
Director Sinai.
So I guess, this is where I guess I, I'm just challenged with what the key decision is. Because to me, the last part of what you said, Director Alper, is to me, the kernel of what a decision is. It's like, status quo is not okay and we need to change it. To me, it's like, I feel confident making that decision, saying we need to change the student assignment plan. Where I start getting a little bit more confused is like, well, to exactly what model? And why do we have to decide exactly the model tonight? Like the three zone model, you know, cuz the, when I hear three zone model, I hear the map. Because the zones are drawn by, you know, what street they're on. So that's why I kind of feel like the decision around not accepting status quo, changing the assignment, doing something like, this is where I'm comfortable doing something around the assignment, you know, the three zone, given the conversation we have. But the scenario that I kind of posed, that I don't know what the answer is. Are we saying in developing the model that we have to solve for transportation? If we don't, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking that, is, is the question is that we have to, we're, we're approving this zone model? And what if we say we'd really like to have a transportation model and the price tag for the transportation model is blown out of the, you know, it's like higher than any of us thought it could be? Are we revisiting it or are we saying, well, no, we made a decision in June that this is the model? So we're, you know, so to me, this is why I'm comfortable saying we need to change the assignment policy. Let's work with this model as the thing, but it might, you know, the staff will do its work and they'll come back with, this is what we think works. So that's what, that, when I say semantics, that's what I mean. So, you know, that's the part that I'm just a little cart before the horse thing. I'm not sure.
No, I don't think that's what the motion will be. I think the motion will, can someone pose what the motion will be?
Under that President Brown to
Yeah, you can respond to it and then go ahead.
And I'm, and I'm happy to respond to it in part by saying what I think the motion would be, cuz I think those are good questions, Director Sinai. I think there are two different things that you said. One is the model itself and the other is like ancillary things like transportation and maybe programmatic issues too, like programmatic programs at the middle schools that you might say could be a prerequisite to doing this. On the model, I, you know, staff is saying we've looked at the two and we think the zoned model, not the, those exact maps, but a three zone model is better than a feeder model. I, for transportation reasons, that's, it seems kind of clear that it would be, it would be better and for other logistical reasons too. So I don't really hear any, you know, and the research, which, you know, seems like sort of a wash. So I feel like the motion on the model could be moved to adopt the zoned, to do it, to change the plan, as you're saying, you know, Director Sinai changed the plan, but going further and saying, adopt a three zone model with, with maps to be determined by staff, not literally the ones that Mr. Martinez proposed tonight. That's part one. That's what I would propose as a motion. But then the second part is, I think, a fair question, which is, okay, well, our, our transportation is, is, is some kind of what a majority of the board deems an adequate transportation plan a prerequisite for going forward with this. And I think that's where I think we have to see, we have to vote on it. My vote would be no, that what we should do, we don't, that we would say, no, we are gonna do this and that we're gonna direct staff to work with AC Transit and work with our own transportation department to figure out the best possible transportation model we can find. But that we've decided to do this and now they need to figure it out. And if the price tag comes back, you know, higher than the board is willing to do, then we would say no, come back with a cheaper version or we're not gonna do middle school transportation, but that we recognize we need to fix this problem and we're gonna do it. I think we have every confidence that we'll be able to do it. But if we don't, if we leave wiggle room for what, what we might go to a feeder model and, and the staff is still having to spend time wrestling with those two different models, that's just gonna make it harder to get transportation done and
I'm sorry, I think the question, I'm sorry, just to clarify, I'm not debating the feeder model. I'm debating, is it a finalist or are we making the decision tonight? That's the part that I'm kind of like, I don't understand the nuance, cuz if we're saying we're gonna change it, the three zone makes the most sense.
I think
Decision is the part that I'm trying to figure out.
Excuse me.
I just wanted to add one thing. I was, I was saying, I think that's what we're saying and budget allocations come in different meetings, right? So we can't do this and we're not approving any funding for transportation, but we are giving direction to staff. There are comments that we would like for them to address the community's concern around transportation. So, I mean, it's already different, it's already different in the fact that this is not a budget discussion. Thank you.
Direction, right, the motion, it doesn't even, even have to be just through our comments. It could be adopt a three zone middle school assignment plan with direction to bring to the board in the intervening fifteen months, transportation program, policy decisions that need to be made in order to ensure successful implementation of the plan. That's what I, that's the motion I would make, which I think is consistent with what Vice President Babbitt is saying.
Director Sinai, does that suffice for you? Does it clear things up for you? Okay. Director Vassadav, see your hand, is it?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, for me, I just wanted to piggyback on what Director Sinai said. Like, if that nuance is important because, you know, making a finalist model and I think what I'm hearing is general consensus around the three zone model, like that's, you know, that's something I felt comfortable making today. But the final call, we don't have enough information. There is no transportation analysis and this is what other districts do. They have a transportation analysis that says, this is how much it will cost. This is what the transportation agency will provide. This is what you will need to do. This is what you would have to do for children with disabilities and, and their transportation. With, without those costs laid out for us, I think it's irresponsible to say this is what we're committing to because that impacts your implementation. You don't know the budgetary impacts of that. Like, I think you do need that analysis to come back in November so that we can say, all right, is this something we can, we can afford to implement next year? Or is this something that we need to implement in two years? There's also, you know, Senator Skinner's bill that, that is, has been delayed, but the one that provides free transportation. There's a lot of different things that we still need to figure out. The state hasn't finalized its budget. Like, you know, there, there's a lot of things that we still need to figure out before we commit to, to a final model. And it, and it does take, it can take more than fifteen months, depending on, you know, who's offering what. And with just one initial conversation with AC Transit, right, without city staff there, without our city partners also pushing us, without seeing how the transportation of our students fits into the city's Vision Zero goals, right? We're not connecting the dots with our city partners also on our transportation plan. So I think we're starting the conversations, but we need more information to say this is the final model.
Okay, um, if, if you don't mind me just kind of interjecting a little bit before you speak, Director Alper, here's what I think that we should do. Since it seems like we are in a place where we're ready to vote, we have to take action on two things tonight. The first thing is to take action on a final model, a finalist or final model. Then the act, the, the other action that was proposed by the superintendent is to decide if we are voting on a finalist tonight. So those are two things. So what we can do first, this is my recommendation and board, you can give me thumbs up or thumbs down. What we should do first is decide on which model we would like to do first. And then we can move to the vote on if we are gonna decide who the finalist tonight, if tonight is the vote, the decision for it or if we're doing it in November. Let's break it up in those two ways. I think that is the easiest thing for us to do tonight. Board, if you agree with that, you can give me a thumbs up. If you disagree, you can log off. No, I'm kidding. Thumbs up will be great. All right, so let's do that. Is there a, excuse me, losing my breath. Is there a motion to approve the first thing that we need to do for tonight, which will be the final model?
So President Brown, would the motion be something like motion to adopt the three zone model?
Share this with you, so, um, it'll be easier. I didn't know if you all had the screen up, but Director Alper.
Oh, yeah, so would it be a motion to approve the three zone model over the feeder model? For the purpose of further discussion about timing around implementation? Something, it's like for the purpose of the next discussion that we're about to have like a minute later.
If, if that is your pleasure for the motion, then that, that will be accepted. Is there a second?
That is my pleasure, just to be
I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you, Director Sinai. And is there any in readiness?
Can, can you repeat the motion? The motion is, are we, we're making the three zone model a finalist?
Well, no, the motion is just for the purpose of the next discussion we have about whether it's gonna be a finalist or the final model. The model that we're talking about is the three zone model, not the feeder model. We're taking
Okay, okay. I, I will agree to that. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded and readiness has been addressed. Ms. Badiels, can you please call the roll?
Yes, I can. Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Vassadav?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes. The motion passes and so the Board of Education has identified a finalist model this evening. And so now we need to take action on if this will be the final model, a final decision or if it will come back to us in November. Before we take action on that, I wanted to ensure that we got all of the discussion that we needed to get out now. Director Vassadav was the last commenter on that, but I, I wanted to make sure if anyone else had anything that they wanted to add before the vote, that they could.
I, I guess to me, it just comes, I, I totally hear you, Director Vassadav. It, to me, it just comes down to whether, I don't have, I'm not concerned that there's gonna be zero transportation in part because I know that even if AC Transit said, we're refusing to talk to you, we would have one bus and one bus driver that we can use for middle school, school transportation. So, and, and AC Transit has not said that, that they're, they're fully willing to talk with us. And so I'm not, I'm not worried about there being zero transportation. It may not be as robust as, as I would hope or as you would hope. But I'm, but I think that we'll do a decent job with it and hopefully a really good job. Programmatically, I'm not worried about that either. I think there's a lot to work out and talk about, maybe do some research about. But I think we'll, we'll do that. I personally feel like even if those things weren't there, that, that because of what I said before, I think we, I would feel comfortable doing it because I think the harms caused by the status quo are worse than the harms that would be caused by integrating our schools and having less than adequate transportation or, or programs. So I'm comfortable just saying this is the finalist, the final model now. But I, but I also am not worried that we're, that we're actually doing that, cuz I think we will work on these other things. And I think it'll make it easier for us to do a better job, for staff to do a better job if they don't have this wiggle room or this uncertainty about whether we're gonna do this or not. I think it's better to send the message to our community and direct staff that this is what we're gonna do. And now we expect you to kind of work through these important problems. So that's why I support making this the final tonight.
And if I could just piggyback on that, Director Alper, I agree with you and I'm sure staff would say that they appreciate the additional time that they'll have to start, jumpstart this work, knowing that to start, jumpstart this work, knowing that we've decided on a finalist or finalist and final model today. I don't necessarily, if, you know, going off of what you said, Director Alper, in terms of transportation and knowing that we'll be able to figure out the kinks in that, I don't really see the value in waiting until November for this decision, and can definitely see the need to take care of it now if we have the ability to do so. So is there any other discussion that's needed, Vice President Babett?
No, I was just gonna say I agree with Director Alper and you as well, President Brown.
Thank you.
So what's the actual motion?
Would you like to make it?
I I would like to make it if I could.
Okay, it's your night to shine. Go ahead.
Well, so I think the motion is to make the finalist model the final model. And and with direction, let me see, what I said before, with direction to bring to the board in the intervening fifteen months, transportation program and policy decisions that need to be made in order to ensure successful implementation of the three-zone model in the fall of 2023.
Can I just ask a clarification, President Brown?
You can, when we get to the point for unreadiness, if that's okay. Actually, go ahead, man, ask it now.
No, I just wanted to know, because he said it at the end, like with the recommendation and the fault, are you saying that that information would come back in the fall that, like, I do think that in November, at some point, there needs to be that information? So
No, sorry, my motion was for the plan to be implemented in the fall of 2023, not this coming fall, right?
Oh, I see.
And that in those intervening fifteen months, the board would bring, I don't know whether it would be in August, November, or January, March, whatever, there probably be a number of different points along the way, but in the intervening fifteen months between now and and the and the first day of school in fall of 2023, staff would bring to us all the different decisions that would need to be made to ensure that this is successfully implemented.
Is there, can I ask the superintendent a question about that?
Like I I welcome that, and and would love to offer one observation, too.
I guess my observation, Superintendent, is there a point where it makes sense for staff to come back with the analysis, you know, the the transportation analysis in particular, so that parents can make an informed decision? Like, is there, do you have a recommendation of when that could be? Because I think fifteen months is a very wide period of time, like, could we say that by, you know, the end, before people have to start applying for middle schools, that by December, that analysis could come to the board or something like that in the motion?
Yes, I I I'll share with you my thinking, and then would welcome your reaction to it. So so I imagine that any decision about transportation beyond the use of the one bus we already have available, that sort of represents it's a budget allocation, which I imagine would, you know, should be taken up as part of next year's budget discussions, which typically start, you know, in in January, and sort of make their way over the course of the the spring semester. We could certainly sort of have some initial analysis prepared prior to that. I think that that's possible. But I guess my proposal is, you know, to sort of offer an amendment maybe to to this motion, is that staff would bring models for increased middle school transportation to the board to inform next year's budget discussions, to to sort of put a timeline on on sort of when when this might come back to the board. I'd like to sort of offer the caveat, though, that I would encourage the board to make the policy decision independent of budget decisions related to transportation.
Director Stein?
So I I would second with a friendly amendment. Because I I think it's more than just coming back. I appreciate your comments, Dr. Stevens. I would like, given with all due respect to some of our educational leaders who are not going to be here in the fall, I would like the motion to actually reflect coming back in the fall with a work plan with benchmarks on when different decisions need to get made. Because fifteen months is a long time, and what we don't want to do is hit twelve months and all of a sudden have to make a bunch of decisions. So I think if we could get a work plan that says, you know, by November 2022, we're going to discuss the policy, you know, we're going to have a policy discussion, and January 2023, we're going to have, you know, the first preliminary transportation decision, and that can be worked on. But I think we want a timeline that shows what are some key decision points that need to get made, so that that carries on with this motion, and the people who come in after have that as part of their their marching orders, in a sense.
Vice President Babett?
I would like for us to make a policy decision tonight and give direction that we'd like to, you know, that's a that's a whole separate you know, budget priority kind of discussion that we're talking about with transportation. While I agree with improving transportation, directing staff to work with AC Transit, I I don't think that we need to to mandate now without looking at our priority list and our staffing and everything that we have going on, that this has to come back at a certain timeline. Like, we can bring that back. But we are giving direction for, you know, at least working with AC Transit, because I just want to be very clear to everybody, we don't offer transportation right now at middle schools. And that's not a part of this policy right now, is to say, not only are we going to do this, but we're going to offer transportation. So I think we're giving direction separately, that this is something we as a board would like to see happen, and I think, you know, as we move on towards discussing and planning and prioritize, we can work out the timeframe. With the way that you made this motion, Director Alper, you're literally bind, you're binding this policy to transportation, and I don't think that's what we wanted to do, even though we do want to work on transportation. Does that make sense? Hope that makes sense.
Yeah, I I hear what you're saying, President Babett. To me, I mean, what I heard was a request for a friendly amendment, though. I think, I think to to me, the director sign is proposal of a work plan makes sense, because a work plan doesn't prescribe any particular thing or any particular timeline. We know that at the very least, we know, we, again, we have our own bus and our own bus drivers, so we have some transportation need to work out. We know there's there's a bunch of policies and the actual maps and stuff that need to be worked on. So I I don't think I'm, I don't think we're hamstringing ourselves, Professor Babett, if we say that we want this three-zone model to be adopted in the fall of 2023, and then the direction, the accompanying direction, is to bring to the board in the fall of 2022, a work plan that has a timeline of transportation program, policy decisions that need to be made over the next year.
I would even just say a work plan with key decision points. We don't even have to say what they all are. But that we want, we want a timeline with decision points, so we know things are coming back.
Mm hmm. Because other things additionally that need to come back outside of transportation, including the the new maps that need to be made, so some sort of work plan. So what I'm hearing, Director Alper, is that maybe your motion is going to receive the 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 both recommendations are from both Director Sinai and Vice President Babett, is that we receive this zoning model as the as the finalist model. However, it we are giving additional additional recommendations on the side to come back with a work plan for us as the board. Do you accept those friendly amendments from the two of them, or?
This, this is how, this is what I, as the person who made the motion, this is what I'll accept and and restate it as the motion.
Tell us what you'll accept.
Okay. A motion to adopt a three-zone middle school assignment plan to be implemented beginning in the fall of 2023, with direction to bring to the board in the fall of 2022, a work plan with key decision points related to implementation. So that's
So that is your motion, and it's been seconded by Director Sinai. We missed the place where I'm reading this, because we
She seconded.
She seconded it, and her, the work plan was actually her friendly amendment, so that's
I know, but I I amended it a little bit, but yeah, okay.
Well, you you accepted the amendment.
Just wanted to double check, she seconded, I didn't see it. Go ahead.
We need to extend the meeting.
Who's who's leading this meeting, me or you? All right, so it's been moved by Directors Alper, seconded by Director Sinai, and readiness has been addressed, and now it's time for the the vote. Ms. Barrios, can you do the the vote, the roll call vote?
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Vassadev?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Vice President Babett?
Happily, yes.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. The motion passes, and we took action on a finalist and final model. Congratulations to you, Manager Martinez, and thank you again for all of your hard work, years of work on on this. Excited to see what this decision will bring both to your office, but to all of our middle schools at the district. So thank you again for your work on this.
Thank you. It'll bring a lot of work, just so you know.
I also want to say thank you. I didn't say that in any of my comments, so thank you for sure.
All right, we are going to now move to our public hearing for the 2022-2023 budget, and I'll open up the public hearing with public comment. If there are folks who are specifically here to speak speak on the 2022-2023 budget, this is your opportunity to do so now. I see two hands, Megan Gillum and Lindsay Knofelt. And I also see Ty Alper's hand, so Ty, lower your hand.
President Brown, will it be three minutes?
It will be. Thank you.
I will promote McGahey Gillum. Rosalina, Ms. Barrios, it's a three-minute timer. There you go.
Thank you, Associate Ruben Arroyo.
Hi, Megan Gillum, welcome. Are you here for a public comment on the public hearing for the 2022-2023 budget? Okay, we're going to go ahead and go to Lindsay Knofelt, and Ms. Gillum, if you have comments, please feel free to raise your hand again.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Knofelt. I'm a parent of a of two elementary students, and I'm only here to comment that the budget that was uploaded is a scanned photocopy. It is not OCR or editable in any way whatsoever. And in a move for transparency and accountability to the district, it would be nice if the PDFs were at least screen readable or selectable in any way, shape, or form. The best practices would actually be to make a public tableau such as what SFUSD does, so that people can dive into the data and really fully understand it. There's 152 pages of unscannable text. So thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you as well. At this, I think we can go ahead and promote Megan Gillum next, or back up here. I saw the hands up again.
I think the hand went back down.
It went back down, and here it is again.
One last try.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Welcome.
I'm so sorry. Before I even, I know that the timer is on, but I don't want to speak out of turn. I I I want to speak regarding the virtual academy. Is that something I'm able to speak on, or if not, then I will be as quiet and zip my lips now.
It is something that is a part of the budget, our budget conversation, so this is the perfect time to speak on it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. I am going to ask that you guys really consider keeping that program open as I have expressed the power for persons I've been able to identify with my daughter, who was a very, very different person than when she came in, leaving Martin Luther King School, very fearful, and with so much that is not under control right now. There's so much culture service that needs to be served to all of the schools as far as the different forms of violence, the different ways of how to serve kids academically outside of the violence. My daughter was one of the six kids to come back to school when COVID had hit. So she was a frontliner, so she's not like one of the majorities of the of the children that are speaking for the program to be open because of the concerns of COVID. But she is willing to actually go back to school, but only with the opportunity of knowing that that program is going to be there for the service for her to come back. It is not the staff that has been there should be supported to stay, and it needs to be continued to be funded, it needs to be advertised to parents, as I didn't know that it was an option. My daughter exercised her right on her own to go through those doors as a customer, not just a parent. These options need to be made known for all children and for all parents. It should not be so marginalized in color right now of what students that are being served, which makes it seem like it's always an easy target with faces like mines. Things are cut and not served in a morsel area, or advertised as they should be. So I'd like to hold you all your feet to the ground and open your eyes to see who is being served and who might be benefit even more if you all partnered with the staff there currently, and keeping them there, and asking, what can we do to, especially with the pandemic? And so much that's going on, that program is so needed. I beg for whoever needs to partner with the vote to vote with this program to stay open for the staff and the students, and more to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mahaganit. Good to see you. All right, well. Associate Superintendent Follins, shall I pass it over to you? Go right ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, so, so, good evening, everyone. I'll be presenting the preliminary budget for 2022-2023, and I'm going to share my screen.
Associate Superintendent Follins, before you begin, my apologies, I need to close the hearing for that part, so the hearing is now closed, and you can take it away. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So so the outcome for tonight, I'm going to be presenting the 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 preliminary budget to the board for discussion, but bringing it back on the 29th for approval. So the focus is the unrestricted general fund, so presenting budget summary and highlights, the variance report, which looks at the variance from the 2022-2023 budget to the budget that we're currently working on in 21-22. I have two versions of the multi-year projections that I will then share with you when it comes to that point in the slides, and then we'll be looking at next steps. In terms of our preliminary budget, as I mentioned, it is an unrestricted general fund focus, and it is projecting the operations for the district from July 1 to June 30, 2023. It is based on the governor's May revision, and of course, in this, in the governor's May revision, the legislature is actually far apart in several on several points from the governor. So it's very likely, it's more than likely, I'll be bringing back a 45-day revision after the governor signs the budget, because we're not quite sure what is going to be in the enacted budget, and we'll be adjusting our books based on what the governor was actually enacted on the June 30. And the 45-day revision actually, I would have to bring it back before August 14. So in terms of the highlight, we do have a positive certification, which means that we're maintaining a positive ending fund balance for the 2022-2023 fiscal year and two subsequent years. We do have this one-time block grant that we've been discussing. It is included in the in the budget as revenue, but in accordance with information and and guidance we received from Alameda County Office of Education. They recommend that this amount be designated in 2022-2023. We also have $4 million in base LCFF funding based on ADA/colar assumptions in the budget. And I'll be going into that a little bit more detail when we talk about the multi-year plan. This amount is also designated. So we're looking at designating $17.3 million onto the governor. The budget is enacted. And then we'll be adjusting our books based on whatever format this new funding is will be given to us and I'll be bringing it back to the board to be approved at that time. It's important to note that the budget does not include negotiated salary increases. And this is obviously an error, somebody went and changes. That's not correct. We don't have a 55 million. Actually, we do have a $5 million ending fund balance. We have it abbreviated. So we do have an ending fund balance of $5.1 million in 2022-2023. And it does include all the board-approved budget priorities and reductions that the board voted on at the last meeting. So I want to give a special thanks to the team. They worked tirelessly to get all of that information in. So what you're looking at is a budget that has in all of all the board-approved budget priorities and reductions. So speaking of budget approved budget priorities and reductions, as a reminder, this was the item that was approved at the last board meeting. And I believe our superintendent is going to be revisiting this area to have a discussion after I presented the budget. So this brings us to the variance report and we have a link to the actual variance report that I'll take you through very quickly. Try to make this a little bit bigger. So as I mentioned, the variance report is looking at the estimated actuals versus the preliminary budget. So you can see, based on the COLA and the other representations that's in the budget, we're actually getting more in our LCFF funding, both base and supplemental, that's $7 million. Well, that $7 million actually represents $4 million due to the COLA enhancements in the budget and then another $3 million just based on the existing COLA. It's interesting to note that we have the one-time discretionary block grant. We broke it out separately because we had to designate it. So the $13.3 million, it's one time, it's in 2022-2023. Other interesting changes, this net change of $5 million is explained on a later slide, which I'll be taking you through, just in terms of the various changes in our revenues and our various expenses. We also have contributions from Fund 20. At the second interim, that amount is projected to be $2.3 million. What we presented to the board, we were using $650,000 in Fund 20 revenues that if the governor's budget does not give us additional funding for COVID expenses. Contributions in, this is the factor of the teacher template. And this is just based on the formula. We're going to be getting less money because we have less teachers. And the enrollment has reduced, was less than the year before. In special education, this change in the contribution is in line with the budget priorities that the board voted for, both in terms of using additional funding to replace the general fund contribution as well as changing the staffing method for mental health. So we're going to be having three psychologists being paid for by the district as staff and reducing the contribution to Alameda Mental Health. And what does that do for ending fund balance? So you can see at the second interim, we're deficit spending by 300,000, where we have this incredible surplus of $18.9 million, of which we are designating almost all of it, 18.5 million, based on recommendations from the Alameda County Office of Ed. So I'm encouraging everybody to focus on our undesignedated fund balance, which is more in line with what we're looking at in terms of moving forward into 2023-24. So again, this is the undesignedated fund balance. If we look down here in designation, you can see that we've designated the 13.3 and the $4 million, which again is in accordance with Alameda County Office of Ed's recommendation. And this is just an explanation of variances. We talked about the increase in LCFF funding that was based on the January budget versus the May revise. And this is the $4 million that we're designating. And then this is the $13.3 million that I've already described. We can go through this, you know, as you will. I'm not going to spend a lot of time in the various changes in the line item, but they're all explained here. There is a significant increase in benefits. And that's because of the stirs and pures going up. And remember that we also had an increase in the retiree, in the worker's comp rate that was board-approved. I don't think I need to spend anything else. I've already explained that. So that's the variance report. So we have a healthy fund balance. When we look at the multi-year, we'll have a lot more discussion there in terms of what this means for the OERs. This brings us to the multi-year projections. So of course, we have to include the one-time board-approved, actually, the one-time in 2022-23. They're removed from 2023-24. That's how we actually compile a multi-year projection. And also, remember, the board also approved ongoing expenses in 2023-24 and those are included in 2023-24. And again, we do not have any estimates for salary increases in these scenarios. And again, we are having a significant surplus and that's a result as a result of assumptions in the governor's May revise budget. We're presenting budgets tonight. The first version is in accordance with recommendation from the Alameda County Office of Ed. We're in 2022-23. We are recognizing the additional revenue, but we're designating it in 2022-23. And because it's a designation that's below the line, these amounts actually have to be designated in the OERs as well. And then in the second version, which is a more realistic version, I'm putting in expenses. I'm expanding the $13.3 million and I'm also expanding the $4.1 million just to show you the very different outcomes that we will have when we look at this a little bit differently. So this is the version one, when we're designating. These assumptions have been shared straight from the LCFF calculator and the school services dot board. You can see that the statutory COLA is 6.56, 5.38, which is a significant increase, and 4.02. This 3.33, which gets us close to a 10% COLA, is actually pending the governor's budget being signed. And the $4 million is largely as a result of this 3.33%. So it's actually being designated below. And of course, we could have not put in the extra amount and then just put it in at May revise. But I think it's full disclosure to put in all the revenue that we know that we're going to be getting based on the May revise and then handle it in accordance with the Alameda County Office of Education. So again, we use the calculator. We come up, these amounts that I'm sharing with you is straight from the calculator in terms of the revenue for the the base funding and supplemental funding. And you can see that the total revenue, now keep jumping about. We're looking at $121 million in 2022-23. You can see that the 13.3 is only in the first year because it's one time. But the other revenue actually is ongoing. So we are, significant reduction from 121.7 to 113.8 and 113.5. And when we look at the expenses, our ending fund balance is very healthy and we're designating below the line. So this is the $5.1 million. That's the same in both scenarios. But where it becomes a little different is that we're designating the same amount in the OERs because designations are one-time. So this $14.2 million is a significant ending fund balance undesignedated. And the 22 million is even more incredible. But this representation, the county only focused on the first year. So I think the second model that I'm going to be showing, sharing with you is more representative of what our ending, our multi-year projections will actually look like. This is our sources and our contributions. And this is a slide that is included in the multi-year in the multi-year projections that I just shared with you. And it's interesting to note that Fund 20 is only one time. It's not going across the other years. Special Ed, we kept constant as did BSEP because we're not projecting any changes in our era at this time. Let's look at the multi-year version, the second version that I talked about. The revenue is the same. Nothing has changed there. But when you're looking at the expenses, if we put in the expense for the one-time block grant, and this is assuming that it's coming in in one year. We will know a lot more when the governor actually signs the budget or when the budget is actually enacted. We will know whether this funding is coming in one time or in three years and we will be budgeting accordingly. But of course, if this ongoing funding is coming in and we have designated that and we're spending it on an ongoing basis, it actually impacts all three years because remember, this is a snapshot. So we have to, it's not like a balance brought forward. So we have to share it in this way in terms of looking at the expenses going into three different years. So you can see the ending fund balance, we're looking at 5.1 and this is actually putting it in expenses. So it impacts the ending fund balance that rolls forward. We're looking at 5.1, 10.1, and 13.8, which the more realistic position to look at. In both pieces, just looking at both, here it brings it home in terms of the 5.1 is the same in both years. And that was easier we focus when it comes to the OERs. We're better off looking at this version because we will be putting expenses in once we know what the budget is, which is Alameda County's Office of Education's recommendation. They're not saying, don't spend the money. They're just saying, get additional information before we start budgeting for the expenses. So, and in the OER, and these are good balances. We haven't seen balances like this in quite some time. So it's a good position to be in. And of course, our challenge now is to is to actually go ahead and spend this additional money down. Julie, did you have a question before?
Yeah, you just, you lost me on the one-time discretionary block grant. On version one, why does that show up in 2023 and 2024? Why does it show up in the two out years?
In the designations? It shows up in the designations in the OERs.
Sorry, in the, go back to the comparison of version one and version two?
Hold on.
Right there. Why is the 13.3 showing up in all three years for?
Sorry, because it's below the line. This is designating it below the line. And designations is just like designating the revolving cash. It shows up in each, in each year. So it's just, it's just taking it out of the fund balance because it's not impacting these fund balances above the line. That's just the very nature of designations.
It is only a one-year allocate, if we get it, it's only a one year, right?
Yes, but because we're not expensing it in the first model, we have to set it aside because it's in the ending fund balance. Because we haven't spent it. Does that make any sense?
So is it like rolling over year to year? Is that what it is?
It's not rolling over. We're setting it aside year to year. This is not an expense. This is below the line. And I'm focusing on ending fund balance that are undesignedated. If it was rolling forward, it would be up here in expenses.
Okay.
So that's why I'm recommending that we put it in expenses because that's a truer representation of what this will look like eventually. The county recommended that we designate it in the first year and was silent about the other years. So I'm recommending that this will be the version that will be in the 45-day revise that I'll be bringing back to the board after the governor actually signs the signs it. But I was hoping this would make it easier, but it may have confused you. This is our regular, if we spent it, which the county told us, we could not put it in expenses. But this is what it would look like if it went into expenses. So I'm showing the version for the county and the version if it was actually in expenses and it does have a different outcome. Any other questions before I move on? Is I, do you still have a question, Julie?
No, thanks.
You're welcome. So the next step, we'll be bringing the budget on June 29 for approval. We'll be, at that time, we will know whether we need to look at the minimum reserve closer. And we're still looking at that and we'll bring it back on the 29th. And of course, the governor's enacted budget will determine what our 45-day revision will look like. And at this point, I can discuss any items or any questions I can answer. And I'll stop sharing my screen.
Thank you so much, Assistant Superintendent Follins, before your presentation. Board of Education, do you all have any questions at this time, Vice President Babitt?
No, I just wanted to thank you for that presentation and for doing the comparison and for really, you know, explaining to us and the community what's happening now with our funds. And then I just want to say that I'm also grateful that we're not actually designating a lot of those funds yet so that we can actually have time to really look at our infrastructure and to really look at more deeply the needs of our, especially our central office and administrative staff as well as supports for our schools and then make sure that all of our partners are able to weigh in on these new funds. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. So Dr. Stevens, I will continue sharing my screen and we can go back to priorities.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. President Brown, with your permission, will sort of shift the conversation just slightly to talk about three particular priorities.
Yes, please. Thank you.
So when the board met last week, there was a discussion about enacting some reductions and priorities to the general fund as well as enacting priorities to several state grants. In that reduction list were three items that the board signaled they would like to see come back for further discussion. And more specifically, for discussion to be funded by the discretionary one-time block grant. And those three items were these. You okay, Pauline?
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Okay. All right, don't start swearing, Pauline.
I'm being good.
All right, you are being good. So one of those ideas was the restoration for one year of the K through five virtual academy. I'll explain each one of these in more detail. But so one idea was that the virtual academy, restoring it for another year. Another idea, again, using one-time discretionary block grant funding was restoring a two-teacher supplement to what's called our K8 assisted homeschool program, our independent study program. And then there was a third idea to add five teachers back into our sort of staffing formula at the elementary level to ensure that there was no class over 23 students large. So what I'd propose to do is sort of talk about each one of those things. And what I'm hoping to be able to gather from the board is additional directions. So what I'd uh propose to do is sort of talk about each one of those things. And what I what I'm hoping to be able to gather from the board is additional direction tonight. Uh and the reason that I'd like to take these three items kind of in advance of the remainder of the items in the one-time discretionary block grant is that there are very specific staffing implications. Um if we were to make decisions, if the board wants to make decisions to restore these programs or add more teachers into our elementary schools. We have to act as quickly as possible uh to try and identify those teachers. Um in effect, what this decision does is create about ten new openings at our elementary schools. Um and that those ten openings would be added to our existing openings. Uh we're very late in the hiring season, and so this is um sort of an HR concern. And that's why I'd like to take these items in advance of a discussion on June twenty ninth about the remainder of the one-time block grant. So what I'm envisioning is that with each one of these items, I'd like to ask the board very specifically for direction. Um so that we staff know exactly sort of what's what what um what work we need to begin to um um initiate to be able to fill the 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 sort of positions that the board might be approving. So before I jump into that, I I do see one hand, and maybe it would make sense to sort of pause, take take question, and we'll just go through each of these some sort of item by item.
Director Alper, um is is this a question or is this your opportunity to give? Are you wanting to use this as your opportunity to give your insight on?
Yeah, sorry. I I may have jumped the gun. I I have questions about the the first one, but but is is Dr. Stevens, are you going to say more about it?
Yeah, I'd like to. I I thought what I do is just provide a little bit of context specifically about virtual academy.
Oh, okay. My questions are about the first one, about the class size supplement. So whatever that's appropriate, President Brown.
Great. Um so why don't we start?
Can I just ask quick clarification? Sorry, I and I might have missed it. I apologize. When we suggested this, um we were talking about it of um reducing the repayment into fund twenty. I don't know if you said that, but just wanted to clarify that that's where the funding would be drawn from.
Uh yes, that that's correct. We're all on the same page. So um that sort of repayment to fund twenty was conceived of as coming from the one-time discretionary block grant. Um and so this would have the effect of reducing that contribution to fund twenty. Great. Um so to talk a little bit first, I'm going to take these actually in reverse order if that's okay. So I'll start with virtual academy, then go to assisted homeschool, and then go to the class-sized supplements. And we'll do one, two, three. Um so to say a little bit about the virtual academy, um we have had three teachers in that program this year. Um approximate cost of those three teachers is about three hundred thousand dollars. Um that's sort of give give or take. Um uh at the end of the school year, we had thirty-nine students enrolled, and of that thirty-nine students, eleven were attending the the virtual academy on inter-district permits. Um it this program is not required by the state. Um it was created a year ago um in a decision by the Board of Education as an additional one-time precaution. Um given that at that time vaccines were not available to students at the K five level. Um what we saw is vaccines became more ubiquitous for students at that age span, uh that enrollment in the program declined by more than fifty percent. Uh went from the high seventies down into the high thirties. Um staff has consistently recommended against re sort of re uh funding this program for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um for a variety of reasons, including the original rationale that vaccines are now available, uh and as well the overall cost to the district of this program. Um so uh staff has not changed its recommendation on this one. Um if we are though going to have virtual academy for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um we need to take some sort of personnel actions, need to transfer staff and then hire some new staff into our elementary school. So we'd like to. Get definitive direction from the board on this particular question this evening. Uh and then whatever direction we get this evening on this particular topic would it would be reflected uh in the June twenty-ninth discussion about the one-time discretionary block grant. Um so with that, President Brown, um can I turn it back over to you and we'll just sort of um query the members?
Yes, please. That would be helpful. Um if you don't mind uh closing the screen just so we can see every one-on-one screen. Um but Board of Education, as we typically do, will do a round uh robin discussion. We'll just call on each of you all, and you can share. Uh your thoughts on this specific item for virtual academy based off of what the superintendent uh shared and your own viewpoint. Um and so if it is okay, I will begin with uh who wants to go first? Uh Director Alper, would you like to go first?
We're and sorry, we're just talking about number three. We're on three, two, one on that list.
We're just talking about um K five virtual academy, which is number two on the list.
Oh, I'll just say my views on number two and three, which is that they have haven't changed, and I I agree with the staff recommendation not to include them. Like the questions I have are about number one.
Um Director Basadev, would you like to go next for?
Yeah, I agree with Director Alper. I think, you know, we in keep increasing our vaccination education work, continue to have a robust testing program. And continue um masking and mandating masking when it makes sense. And so for me, um I agree with uh the staff's recommendation not to fund.
Director Sinai?
I'm in support of send uh funding the K five virtual academy for reasons I've said in the previous meetings. I I don't, you know, we don't decipher between inter-district transfers and not inter-district transfers in other classrooms. Um so I wouldn't in this one either. Um but I do believe that we have some overwhelmingly medically vulnerable families that have have expressed a serious need. And because COVID has not alleviated and vaccines are not mandated and testing resources are unclear that I support continuing the K five academy for one, one year.
And Vice President Babitt?
So um this is really a hard one. Um and for me, um yesterday really solidified my decision because. At our boarding cabinet workshop, our strategic planning meeting for next year, it really just confirmed that we don't have the capacity as a district to really develop what other free K through twelve online schools have spent years developing. And so while it's disheartening to me to disappoint the families that have enjoyed our virtual academy and the teachers who've put their heart and soul into making it um so well appreciated. I think that BOSD taking this project on as a long-term auction requires more capacity than we have at this time. And while I hear you saying, let's do it for one more year, one more year will come, and we will be making this same decision because. The families really want this as a long-term uh program and a long-term initiative. So for me, it was set up short term, and um. I really can't guarantee that we're going to be able to offer what these families can actually get um from other free K through twelve online schools. So I'm a no. Thanks.
Thank you. Um and for my direction, I am, as I've expressed at these last couple of weeks, I am a yes to support uh funding the. Virtual academy and homeschool again for one more year. Um we've heard week after week how how imperative it is to continue this program. At least for one more year, we've heard from our medically fragile families um that this is a necessity and that they need uh this program. Additionally. We thought that when we recommended this program for one year, that we would be in a different place with COVID uh than we are now. And the reality is that we are not. We are still in the same. Um place with COVID and with additional thing additional COVID challenges on the horizon as um projected after this summer. So. You know, that that is my my vote. I realize that both Director Sinai and I are in the minority with this vote. And so uh Dr. Stevens, I'll ask you. I'm sorry, this is direction. This is not a a formal vote. This is direction. But Dr. Stevens, um I'll ask you to recap again uh what that means. Uh for the two of us to be in the minority with this vote and what it means for um the June twenty-ninth meeting.
Yeah, thanks so much, President Brown. So uh we do really appreciate the clarity of this direction. So what this means is that we will um initiate communication um about this direction. That will be both to um uh our independent school administrator, uh their independent study of school administrator, as well as families in the program. Um and then this would have the effect of sort of um keeping in place the transfers of our virtual academy teachers into in-person elementary teaching assignments.
Directors, my name?
Yeah, can I just ask um Dr. Stevens that um contact is made with the families in order to encourage them and help them understand the safety precautions that are being taken. I would hate that we lose students um to other online. If if that's what they feel they need to do to stay safe. Uh but if there are ways that we can communicate with them, please, please do so.
We will do. We will do that. Thank you for that.
And if if I if I could just add, um this isn't direction, but um I do want to appreciate our families will have taken an enormous amount of time. To engage with the Board of Education via email, via public comment, uh and even in one-on-one conversations. Uh to really advocate for this program. And I don't want them to walk away from this evening feeling like their advocacy was in vain. Um or that their advocacy fell on deaf ears because it definitely did not. I think Vice President Babitt highlighted it best that this was a very challenging and difficult decision. And it is a continues to be a diff a difficult and challenging time. Uh but I did want to thank you all for for your advocacy as well as um our teachers who helped. To run this program uh this for these last years and for all of the work and support that went into um to this. Thank you again for for all that you you all have done. Um and although tonight's uh decision may not have been what we were wanting to hear, expecting to hear. We do appreciate your ongoing partnership to ensure that we are doing our best to serve our students. So thank you.
Uh thank you for that, President Brown. Um moving on to the second item. Um so so this was um also a year ago. Um we made a decision to um supplement the staffing of of a program called the K eight assisted homeschool program. We we know it more colloquially as independent study. Uh so we added two additional teachers into our independent study program for K eight. Um we've had a chance now, um sort of sorry, the rationale a year ago was very similar to creating the virtual academy in the first place. That we wanted to expand virtual options available to families given um at that point uh the lack of access to vaccines for students of a particular age. Um we did sort of similar to virtual academy, see a real decline in the enrollment in that independent study program over time as more and more families made their way back into in-person education here in the district. Um we've had a chance now to look at our current um applicants uh for independent study. Um we know definitively that we can serve our current applicants in independent study without that staff supplement. Um we can do that with our existing staff. So we are not recommending that we bolster the independent study with those two additional staff members for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um but rather that we allow those families just to enroll with the current staff, and we know we can meet those needs without the supplement. Um so that so uh staff is not recommending um that we would renew for another year that two FTE supplement to our assisted homeschool program. Uh and uh and given that there are staffing implications for this one, we're asking again for the same level of clear guidance so that we can sort of make the take the appropriate actions from an HR perspective.
Um uh Superintendent Stevens, I hope it's okay with you. Um I believe that we are probably going to need to extend the meeting, especially because we have the LCAP item. So before we hear the feedback from the board, is there a motion to extend the meeting? And in your motion, please, at the time that you are recommending.
How long is the LCAP item going to be, President Brown, or Dr. Stevens?
It's just a public hearing. Um we'll be bringing it back on the twenty-ninth for a formal vote.
But keep in mind, we will have discussion on this part, and then we also have one more thing to discuss the class sizes. So um. Director Alfred, in your motion, just keep that in mind.
Well, I don't know what you mean to the hearing. Well, what do you propose? Eleven fifteen, eleven twenty?
Eleven twenty is fine.
Okay, I'll move Julie.
Julie's face.
I don't want to give anything away, but it's only seven forty-eight where I am. Um all right, I'll move to extend the meeting to eleven um twenty.
This is your second.
Pacific Standard Time.
I'll second.
All right, any unreadiness? Ms. Badios, can you please call the role?
Yes, uh Director Sinai?
Yeah, if we can do any earlier, that would be great, I guess.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Vice President Babitt?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you. Uh Vice President Babitt, would you like to give your direction this time?
I wanted to ask, did you tell us how many students were being served in this K through eight teacher population?
Uh no, I did not. And I I don't have those numbers sort of at the ready. Um I had uh. Sorry, I I can easily get them to the board, but we have looked at the total number of students um both enrolled now and who have applied for the program and know that we can meet those needs on on the the sort of twenty-twenty-one levels of staffing. We don't need the um the supplement.
Okay, great. I'm comfortable not um expanding that.
Um Director Vasudev?
With the staff's recommendation not to expand.
Director Alper?
All right, and same.
Director Sinai? Great. All right, well, I'll be the lone shark. You all already know where I need to stand. No big speech for this one, but that's the direction from the board director, uh Superintendent Stevens. So. There's that. Let's go ahead and do the last item.
Thank you very much. Um so this final item has to do um with uh an idea to add back into our elementary schools five teachers, five FTEs. Um the cost of this particular item is about five hundred thousand dollars. Um as background on this, um we uh the board knows, I know public knows that we've been experiencing. Um over the last two years, a pretty steep decline in enrollment at the elementary level. Um we've lost about four hundred students over the course of the pandemic. Uh we've lost six hundred in total. Um as is the case every single year, um we apply a formula that was developed as part of the BSEP measure. Um that sort of helps us calculate the number of staff that we allocate to our schools. Um that also helps us then understand how much funding, what sort of what kind of budget we're putting towards our staffing. Um this year, in light of the enrollment decline across multiple schools, um uh our use of the very same formula. Um indicated that we should reduce seven teachers in total from our elementary schools. Um when we reduce those seven teachers, it turned out that that produced five classes in five different elementary schools that were larger than twenty-three. Um none of these classes is larger than twenty-six students. Um but there are nonetheless five classes that have exceeded that twenty-three. Just as a reminder, the the twenty-three comes very directly from our BSEP language. Um we have no actual class size maximum. Uh what we do is essentially use twenty-three as an average target number. Um and 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 yet nonetheless, I I for many families and teachers, um the sort of expectation has become uh that twenty-three is the the actual maximum. Um so so we uh staff continue to recommend that we um do not restore these five staff positions. Uh it's been our view that it's a very important sort of fiscal decision uh to keep the district right-sized in terms of staff as the enrollment declines. Uh we're watching some of our neighbor districts um really struggle um with the effect of this deferred decision-making. Uh on staffing and that over years as enrollment declines, it becomes harder and hundred harder um to make the tough calls to sort of right-size the district. So our proposal uh continues to be just to use the standard staffing formula that we've been using throughout this BSEP measure. Um just as a sort of um sort of a side doll of this, we did go back and check in with a past associate superintendent and our past BSEP director. Um to make sure that we were allocating consistent with past practice, and that was in fact true. Um so uh our recommendation is just to sort of hold steady um that we would have these five classes that exceed the the twenty-three. Um but again, none are larger than twenty-six. So I'll turn it over to the board, and again, we're seeking guidance on this particular question.
Thank you. Uh Director Alper, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. And I I do have a few questions on this because I and I wasn't here last meeting, and I apologize, but. I and I'll I'll start out by saying that I I have a pretty strong like sort of policy um reasons for for supporting the staff recommendation not to do this. Um but I also have real logistical concerns that I want to ask about. Um the. And I know, Dr. Stevens, you said this sort of there's been this sense of a twenty-three average in a in a classroom, but but. This was very explicit conversations that we had when we passed BSEP, which was that we used to have a district-wide average of twenty-three. Um and that created pretty wide variations because when you have a whole, you know, district average, you could have one. Classroom at one school that's very small and one that was very big. And so we moved to school-wide average so that to reduce but not eliminate. The possibility of some outlier classrooms, but it definitely reduces it when you have a school-wide average of twenty-three. Um and my understanding is that we will have a school, no, we we will have a school-wide average of twenty-three at every school, right?
Yes, that that is true.
So no, no, so there's a few classes that are over, over 23 but under 26. So they have a couple more students than our school-wide average in BSEP. To me, I, I don't understand what, what the principal, where the principal is there, like how we decided to assign, just to say we might hire five more teachers. And I think it sets a really bad precedent, even if it's for COVID, as a COVID, you know, accommodation. As we, we're just talking about the last item, COVID is still going to be with us. It's, it's, I don't, I don't think we're going to be able to undo this in the next year. And then we have BSEP coming up and we can adjust class sizes if we want. We could make a hard cap if we wanted. So I think it sets a really bad precedent, but my logistical questions are for Assistant Superintendent Tobias Espinoza. We're talking about is June 15th, right? And when do principals leave?
Most principals, their last day will be the end of this week.
The end of this week. And so this hiring can't happen now. It's going to happen in August, right? These new teachers?
If the principals are expected to do the hiring, yes, it will, it will need to happen in August. But we would be trying to work with the principals and do it during the summer, regardless of their work schedule. So HR would have, would be taking on the responsibility of trying to get these positions filled if they're created.
So we'd be trying to hire these teachers either without principals at all or with them right before school starts. And then each of these teachers would ha, has four release periods a week, right?
Correct. Mattering on the grade level, but yes, first grade and above.
So is that why you said we, this would really be 10 teachers we need to hire? Because we would need to have teachers hired to cover those release periods and in random sort of subjects across different schools?
Yes, in PE and science. And the reason being that the majority of those people are, are split between multiple sites or are filling in some really weird FTE numbers, like .64. And so adding a section causes great difficulty for those people to be able to schedule. Plus, the schedules have already been determined by the sites in terms of when the prep periods, as you might want to call them, or release periods are scheduled.
So wait, can you just explain what the implications are of the SCET master schedules being determined already?
It makes it more difficult on the principal having to redo it in August and redistribute a schedule to everybody and make sure that classrooms are all scheduled correctly, that we have staff where they need to be, and that everything is set up so that these classes can happen and the students are in the right places.
Again, I guess my last question is if we can't hire these teachers if, over the summer and then, but, but the board makes a decision to add them anyway, they would be subs, I guess, right? Until permanent teachers were, were found?
Correct. We would have to hire substitutes until we were able to fill the positions.
Okay. Well, I'll just say that I'll stop. I appreciate those answers. But to me, the real, very real possibility of having a sub is much worse for the kids than having, you know, 23 or 24, 25, or even 26 kids in a class. And again, I just, I think is, is, it's, I just think it's irresponsible as a policy matter because I don't see the logical stopping point next year. So I'm a no on this one. Thanks.
Director Sinai.
So I appreciate the questions, Director Alper, and kind of mapping it out. I do see this as a COVID mitigation, but not as a safety COVID, is not to make fewer people in a classroom, is to deal with the mental health impacts of COVID and the impacts on both of our students and our teachers. So the question, you know, I appreciate the questions of the difficulty of doing this. I also feel like this came to our attention months ago, but we couldn't deal with it unless we dealt with it as part of our budget process. So it, you know, does it become a self-fulfilling prophecy that because we didn't deal with it before, they're out of luck for us to deal with it now? Because I think fundamentally, our social emotional health of our students and our staff do come first. So my question back, you know, not to put you on the spot, Assistant Superintendent Tobias Espinoza, but is it possible that this is something that could get worked out? I mean, is it, is, is the hurdle or the lift seen as something that's insurmountable? Or something that, you know, based on working with the teachers, working with the principals, working with the sites, it's something that could be, could be implemented?
I mean, anything is technically possible. What I would say is that it's going to be a very difficult lift. I don't know that it's an impossible lift. The reason I call it a difficult lift is that we are in June 15th and most highly qualified teachers who have credentials are going to already be hired on at all of our neighboring districts. And we already have two vacancies that we're looking for, that we have not successfully been able to fill at this point, that have been open for, one of them for a month and a half and the other one for about a month, that we have not been successful in filling at this point, that we're still working on filling, that are both elementary positions. So it, it's a, like I said, it'll be a very hard lift. It will not be impossible. But I, like I said, to, in answer to Director Alper, is, is that we do face the very real probability of starting with some subs.
Vice President Babbitt.
Yes, thank you. And thank you so much for these clarifying questions. I just want to really highlight that we're talking about first and second grade classrooms. And so really, in BSEP, the spirit of the measure was to make sure that specifically for our earliest learners, that they wouldn't be in overcrowded classrooms. And I know my children's classrooms were between 17 and 19, at the most between kindergarten and second grade. And I know that they would have really been left further behind if they were in a class of 23 or 25 or 26. It takes, it's a lot of, even one to two children more in a classroom. I remember the teachers really explaining to us the impact of that, right? And the impact of what that means for what they need to do for differentiated learning and what they need to do to keep everyone engaged. And so I think adding the teachers is something that we as a district need to really think about now, but we also need to think about this back at the time when we are, you know, we say this. We need to make sure we're in line with our hiring timelines. And we need to think about not just being okay with the letter of the law, but being okay with what our students and families need. And I think sometimes we think about, we do these things as, you know, because of the families that scream the loudest. But really, we do these things because they're the best for our kids and the family shouldn't have had to scream. We should have literally set up these, and we can still do this for next year. Like, we need to set up a way in which even though we're staying within the measure of the law because we're smart enough to give us some flexibility, that we're really making a statement that we don't want these first and second grade, our earliest learners, to be in overcrowded classrooms. We're talking about Malcolm X. We're talking about Sylvia Mendez. We're talking about, I believe it's a first grade class at John, oh, Thousand Oaks. And so this, this is, these are communities that are already in a lot of ways very much impacted for different reasons as well, especially Sylvia Mendez and Malcolm X. And so I think if, my question, while I support whatever hurdles we have to go through, is what are our, what is, what are our abilities to, to offer emergency credentials as well? So that we're not just taking substitutes, but we can literally say this can be your teacher for the year. And we know that while we're looking for officially credentialed teachers, we know that there are lots of great teachers who teach in other districts and other schools who are still working on passing all of the exams, like the hurdles to become a teacher is just crazy, even though it does offer some guaranteed support. So that's my question to you and my, my vote is that we still make, try to make this happen for these classes.
We don't actually offer emergency credentials. That's something that the CTC offers. So what we would do is if we had an applicant who qualified for one, we would help that person to apply, but it's up to the CTC as to whether or not one gets granted. It's not up to the district. And so they have to meet a certain requirements that were actually waived this last year because of COVID, but have been reinstated for the fall. And so, which include passing tests and doing all of the requirements to become a teacher. So while we can look into that and hopefully have somebody who would qualify and be able to receive one, we can't guarantee that.
I appreciate that.
Sorry, Director Alper, I see that your hand is up, but I want to make sure that we get through the first round first. And then I'll go back to you if that's okay. So I haven't had the opportunity here from Director Vasilev.
Yeah, thank you so much, President Brown. I guess my question would be for the superintendent. Like, if we do have to hire subs, or maybe it is for, for Assistant Superintendent Tobias Espinoza, how, how long would that be? Like, how long would, are we thinking it would take to get a current teacher in there?
To get a fully credentialed teacher?
Yeah.
It, it really truly matters on applicants and getting the interview process done and getting them onboarded. So if we had highly qualified applicants right now, we can hire them. What I'm sharing with you guys is that we have two vacancies right now, that we've already exhausted all the applicants for those two positions that are requiring the same credentials that these positions would require. And so we would be trying to pull more applicants in at this point, which will be difficult because it, we're pulling from a dried-up fountain, basically. There's not a huge amount of highly qualified credentialed teachers out there, which is what our mandate by the state is to first consider fully credentialed, highly qualified teachers. So that would be our, our thing would be to put out and try to recruit and figure out how many new applicants we get. But our, our current lists that we've been collecting over the last month and a half, we've already exhausted.
And to develop a new list takes weeks.
It, it could. It matters on how many people apply and what time period. We're, we're competing with every other district out there that possibly has vacancies as well.
Okay.
Just to give my direction, I think that there have been a couple of points that have been brought up tonight that are really important. The first being the mental health needs of our students and how supporting the staff recommendation won't support the, the mental health needs of our students. One of the schools that we're talking about, adding additional teacher and it helps support the class sizes Sylvia Mendez. And we saw on our chart tonight that they had the highest mental health needs for their students. And so I don't want us to lose focus on the point that Director Sinai made earlier about the importance of not expanding class sizes if we have the ability to. And I think from the teacher perspective, we've heard our educators, we've received their letters. And I will, you know, tell you as educator myself that it really does make a difference if you have two or three extra students in your classroom or, you know, and having two or, the difference between having 23 and having 26 is incredibly impactful, especially when we talk about our younger students who have more learning needs than our older students in our elementary schools. And so, you know, for those reasons and for the aforementioned reasons by my board, I think that this is definitely something that we should do and something that we should support, especially because we are not in the place where funds are, or the lack of funds is the barrier to helping us do this. Assistant Superintendent Tobias Espinoza, I do want to kind of say to you that my recommendation isn't absent what I've heard you say in regards to the challenges around hiring, because I know that they are, are great, right? And I do understand that we are kind of late in the season to, to begin hiring for these positions. But I don't think that, so I know we are kind of late in the game, but I think that if we have the ability to do this, I think that we should. I would be interested in maybe connecting offline to support or strategize other recruitment efforts to ensure that we can get these, get these positions filled in a timely manner. So I hope that, that would be okay with you, Director Alper.
Yeah, thanks. I won't belabor the point. I just want, I, I want to push back on the suggestion that the staff recommendation is not going to support the mental health needs of our children in these classes. I mean, I think it's just a difference of opinion. I think we all want to, and believe that we are supporting the mental health needs of our children. I think that having a sub in the classroom is worse than having a couple more students. And I get that there's a difference of, of opinion on that, but I think, I, I think that that's a real concern. The, the, the lack of ability to hire 10 more teachers when the principals are, are all gone is going to lead to subs. And just to, I just want to sort of clarify on the BSEP point that the, we, in 2016, we, it used to be the, the K-3 classrooms used to be 19 and 20 kids. But in 2016, we raised class sizes in the, in K-3 and lowered class sizes in 4-6. Those were in the, I think, 28. We lowered it to 26 in 4-5, sorry, 4-5. And at K-3, we raised from 20 to 23. And, you know, there's, it's, it's always going to be true that a few, fewer kids will make a difference. That's certainly true, but that's going to be true the next year too, and it's going to be true the year after that. And anyway, I, I've made the point, but I think we all care about the mental health needs of our elementary school kids.
Director Sinai.
I, I share your concern, Director Alper, with filling classes with subs. And I guess one of the questions I have Assistant Superintendent Tobias Espinoza, and again, not to get wiggly on this, but, you know, respecting the need to do some planning and, and looking at where impacts might be greater. So I know that the five schools that we mentioned, if I recall, I think two are in the upper grades of three, four, and maybe three are one, grades one and two. So there might be a compromise where we're looking at the younger grades. But I guess the question I have is for teachers who were transferred out. And I'm thinking particularly Sylvia Mendez, knowing how hard it is to find bilingual teachers. Would teachers, teachers who were transferred out have the option to return?
If a teacher was transferred out, yes, they would have the option to return. But no teacher was transferred from Sylvia Mendez.
So how did we lose a teach? Where did they go?
We, we, we did not make a cut to Sylvia Mendez. It's a change in where the bubble is in terms of the class size of how many students are at which grade level. So we actually did not make a cut to Sylvia Mendez. They have the same number of teachers for next year as they have currently. And we did not move anybody from Sylvia Mendez.
Okay.
I'm glad I'm not a master plan scheduler. The, the enrollment in the second grade class is what just went up.
No, actually, that's, that's actually not accurate either. It's the, the bubble of kids that grow, as it goes through the school changes. And so the, there was a increase in the size at grade four at Sylvia Mendez and a comparable decrease at grade two. So that's where the shift happened. So grade four is going to have more teachers than, and grade two is having one less.
Okay, that's not what I understood, but thanks for clarifying. But that is why grade two will now have 52 kids with two teachers and 56 students. So 56 students at grade two is going to be served by two teachers. That is true, correct? Current, in our current plan?
It's 52 kids, according to my records, with two teachers, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Superintendent Stevens, you asked for our guidance on these three things. And so before we move on, And so before we move on to the LCAP public hearing, I want to make sure that you, the guidance is received well and you are good to go.
Yes, I feel we have the information we need. Thank you.
Wait, can we just clarify what it is? I mean, I think I know, but I don't.
Yeah, as, as a recap, I, I think I'm hearing sort of the, the majority view on both Virtual Academy and the assisted homeschool is, is no. The majority view on the addition of the, you know, additional elementary school teachers to lower class sizes, yes.
Wait, what did you say?
I, I have heard a no on Virtual Academy and assisted homeschool. And I have heard a yes as the majority view on adding the, the additional teachers to the elementary schools.
Oh, okay. Anna's vote on that?
Anna, Anna, I thought your, your vote was to support it. Was that yes or no?
It was yes. But I guess like the caveat, as Superintendent Stevens is talking, is the issue of the subs, right? Like, I think that it feels like the majority of the board also doesn't want a situation where we have subs. Is that correct?
We can't do that. Once we say it, I mean, then we've got subs, right? I mean, we either say it or we either say hire the teachers or we don't. We can't say hire them, but unless they're going to be subs for a week.
Yeah, this is hard.
Can I make a substitute? Not motion, because we're not voting?
This is like another friendly amendment?
It's not a friendly.
Could we focus on the first and second graders?
I like that compromise.
Which would be three, three classes versus five.
I like that compromise. That's a good compromise.
And that would make it, I don't know how many fewer than 10, but it wouldn't be 10.
That, that lightens the load, to be sure, from, from an HR perspective.
Would, would?
I mean, that was my major concern was those grades. So yes.
Okay. And I'll also support the recommendation from Director Saini, Director Vasudeva, and then Director Alper.
I support Director Saini's recommendation.
Director Alper.
I appreciate the compromise, but, but still, I'm a no.
Thanks, but no thanks, I guess is what you say. All right. Well, we are done with this item. Thank you for your ability to chime in on that, Assistant Superintendent Espinoza. We appreciate it. All right, let's go ahead and move to our last agenda item, which will be the public hearing on the LCAP. And so we will go ahead and open that up right now. I see two hands who would like to comment on that. Keep in mind that we have about three more minutes for our meeting. So each commenter will be given one minute to speak. Can you please promote InMendoza?
And Mendoza is, is ready. Put the timer.
Thank you. Hi, InMendoza, you can begin whenever you're ready. Okay, we'll come back to you. All right. Can you please promote Lindsay Knopf?
Hello, my name is Lindsay Knopf. I'm speaking as a member of the PAC. Oops, sorry. I'm speaking as a member of the PAC right now. It's unfortunate that the PAC was unable to review this draft before the end of the school year. One was shared just prior to the final meeting, but it was largely blank. My first comment is that it's unclear what the potential new goal number five is to benefit our students experiencing homelessness. It's different in three places. Number two, our survey results for safe, welcoming and inclusive climates, goal three are abysmal and not reflected in the successes or identified needs sections. It seems that from the perspective of our families, BUS, there's a gap. And BUSD has a lot more work to do to create climates where students are ready to learn. Number three, the PAC would like to help adjust the portion of the LCAP annual update with a shortened summary of our final comments and not the ones meant to address general budget reductions. Thank you very much. I had to speak so fast.
But you did it. So thank you so much. All right, there. I'm going to try to go back to you one more time, InMendoza.
So I actually think, I actually think InMendoza is actually Lisa is stupid, our director. Sorry. I think she, I think she's on her son's phone. So that's why she was raising her hand.
I was going to say double personality. Well, I think we do need to promote her then, right? Ruben, do you need her?
I think that. Well, that's, if there's questions, of course, but I know you have one. Oh, the clock just turned. You have zero minutes left.
All right. Well, let's go ahead and close the hearing, promote InMendoza, Mrs. Stupin, whoever that is. And then Ruben, I'll just pass it over to you really quickly.
Well, I'm going to keep it brief. We've updated the draft. We will be putting out, there are some pieces that we need to update with budgets. We did receive that information from Assistant Superintendent Pauline Fallasby. So there will be an update made to the draft and we will repost it as soon as that, as soon as that is made to reflect the updated numbers. But we are presenting to you all a year two of a three-year LCAP. And then we will be asking for that approval on June 29th.
Board of Education, any questions on this? Nope. All right. Well, thank you. We will move to our second and last opportunity for public comment. There is one public commenter in the audience who has their hand up. Ms. Bodios, can you please promote Ms. Gilliam and, yeah, just Ms. Gilliam, please.
I can do that. How many minutes are we putting the timer for?
One minute, please. Thank you. Hi, Ms. Gilliam, welcome back.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak again. I'm listening to you all and I'm looking at the, it doesn't look like there has been a fair amount of time for everyone here to address the real needs in a timely manner on things that involve children and parents. And it's a disservice. And for everybody to be on crunch time and to make some of these decisions without allowing enough people the opportunity to be able to really hear the voices and for you, all of you to take up so many seats when you can really, really hear what differences that could be made if you really opened up the, the voices, the opportunities for others to say something to you and really make a really sound decision. This is not timely and it won't be effective and it won't work if it's not done in the timeframe to really hear those that need to be served. Thank you.
Thank you as well. All right, everyone, a second opportunity for board member comments. Director Alper, no, you want to say something? Just kidding. Good night, everyone.
Happy Juneteenth!
Oh, happy Juneteenth. Happy Pride Month. Happy everything. Happy go to bed. Good night.